Board, when I'm coming to order, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderwoman Tyus. Alderwoman Middlebrook, present. Alderman Bosley. Alderwoman Evans. Alderwoman Hubbard. Alderwoman Negracia. Alderman Calder.
Here.
Alderwoman Rice.
Present.
Alderman Gunther.
Here.
Alderman Ballmer.
Present.
Alderwoman Martin.
Present.
Alderwoman Graham.
Present.
Alderwoman Murphy.
Here.
Alderwoman Howard. Alderwoman Green. Alderman Odenberg.
Here.
Alderman Rhodey. Alderman Todd.
Rhodey is present. Rhodey's present.
Thank you. Alderman Todd.
Here.
Alderwoman Davis. Alderwoman Spencer.
Present.
Alderman Collins Mohammed. Alderman Boyd.
Present.
Alderman Bakoro.
Present.
Alderman Orion.
Here.
Alderman Cone. Alderwoman Clerk Hubbard.
Here.
Alderwoman Boyd.
Here.
Alderwoman Navarro.
Present.
President Reed.
Here.
Alderwoman Tyus. Alderman Bosley. Alderwoman Evans.
Present.
Alderwoman Hubbard. Alderwoman Negracia.
Present.
Alderwoman Howard. Alderwoman Green. Alderwoman Davis.
Present.
Alderman Mohammed. Alderman Cone. Twenty-two present.
Quarren being present, we are just so blessed today to be led in prayer today by Associate Pastor of Lennet Missionary Baptist Church and Nineteenth Ward, uh, resident Pastor Ruth Booker Phillips. Pastor. Uh, you have to unmute yourself, Pastor.
Hey, I am unmuted, okay, okay. You ready?
Yes, yes, thanks Pastor.
Yes. Oh God of this great universe, we come to you with humble hearts. We pause to say thank you for allowing us to be included on this wake-up list this morning. We ask you to bless our President of the Alderman Board, President Louis Reed, and his entire staff. We ask you to bless every ward that each Alderman and Alderwoman represent in our great community. Let us be mindful of what's taking place in our community, such as violence that's taking place, including murder, domestic abuse, carjacking, and other areas. Let us be prayerful when we go to make decisions on the table, that this is important, major issues that we have to look at. Let us not forget, at this meeting, that we are all in it together to see great results. Let all the participants know to remain positive in their efforts of resolving issues that's taking place in our community. Let them know that a house divided cannot stand. But we, we know, as well as everybody else know, that if we stand together, we can move mountains and things can happen. Yes, we may all have different opinions, but not allow them to take place where there can be battles, but instead victory. We may become disagree, disagree, in a lot of things we may disagree upon, but let not us become disagreeable where we can't come to a decision of a positive reaction. And in our community, we know that we can do better if we stand together. We ask you right now to bless our nation. We ask you right now, the new president, new vice president, give them guidance and give them what to do to make things better. But here in the city of St. Louis, we need you like never before. We ask you to watch over every last one, including the chief of policemen, they cannot do it alone. But we ask you right now, as this meeting take place, that you give us the mind, the will, and the power to know that we can make a difference if we stand together. We honor you and we bless you, bless the mayor, bless everybody under the sound of my voice that would take place in this meeting, that it would be a positive meeting, and the year of 2021 will be greater than any year we ever experienced. We give you glory, we give you honor, in your matchless name, we pray, amen.
Amen. Let's give Pastor Booker a big round of applause. Pastor Ruth Booker Phillips, we're gonna have to have you back, uh, we are so appreciative and thankful that you've joined us today and, uh, led us off with a great prayer. Thank you Pastor.
It was my honor, thank you all.
Thank you. You know, we're gonna suspend with our regular order business to take up our courtesy resolutions calendar. Alderwoman from the nineteenth.
Uh, Mr. President.
Courtesy resolutions calendar.
Mr. President, members of the board, I would like to move that we adopt our courtesy resolution calendar, thank you.
Move by Alderwoman on nineteenth and entertain a second on that.
Second.
Second about Alderman from the twenty-second. Uh, Alderwoman from the twenty-sixth, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President, thank you, Mr. President, members of the board, this morning I have the honor of recognizing Upsilon Omega chapter of Omega Phi Psi Fraternity Incorporated as they celebrate one hundred years of faithless charity and important contributions in the city of St. Louis. Now, a little quick note, uh, the best list of this amazing chapter is Donna L. Gage, who is a constituent of the twenty-sixth ward, so you know, I like to brag, I'm his Alder Lady too. My better half is a member of this chapter as well, Rodney Hubbard, so it is an honor to be able to share in this experience, and sharing this honor, honoring them this morning. And with that, I will bring up, uh, Donald L. Gage.
Welcome Donald, welcome. Uh, you have to unmute yourself.
And I'm trying, how you all doing? Good morning. God's morning on this wonderful Friday. Excuse me for my turn, I didn't think I would come on this early in the meeting, I have to go change right quick.
Oh, that's alright, that's perfect, go ahead, you look good.
Your eyes like getting bad. On behalf of the great man, the Upsilon Omega chapter of Omega Psi Phi Incorporated, I would like to thank the city of St. Louis, the Board of Aldermen for giving us this distinguished, uh, resolution. It means a lot, our chapter's definitely been doing a lot of work in St. Louis for the last one hundred years. We have a great stalwart man who has done things in this city. The first African-American ma- mayor was Freeman Bosley, he's also a member of our organization. Jimmy Edwards is a member of our organization, so we're definitely, we're privileged to receive this, and my Alderwoman, I rocks with her, and thank you for allowing me to be at your meeting, appreciate you.
Alright Donald, yeah, and, uh, you know, on behalf of the Board of Aldermen, I also wanna send my special thanks and, uh, and congratulations on all of the work that you all have done over the years. Uh, it's greatly, greatly appreciative, Alderwoman, uh, Shamine Clark Hubbard, thank you for bringing this resolution. This is, uh, you know, I'm honored to have my name added to it. When you think about some of the things that, uh, that chapter does, that, that, if they are, they go out and work within the community each and every day, uh, to work to try to make positive change, and to be positive role models for a lot of our young African-American men, uh, that are, you know, struggling, right? Uh, when you look at the unemployment rates amongst young African-American men in the city of St. Louis, uh, it hovers sometimes upwards of twenty percent. Um, so they need some hope, they need some guidance, and they need good positive role models, so thanks to all of you for what you, what you continue to do to provide those things. Alderman from the twenty-second.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board, uh, I certainly rise in support of this resolution. Um, the Omegas are actually in the twenty-second ward, thirty-nine hundred Goodfellow, um, they've been a blessing to our community. We have, um, had some phenomenal Christmas parties there, uh, going fifteen years strong until coronavirus. Um, we've had, uh, twenty-second ward meetings there for as long as they have been in our ward, and we certainly appreciate them and consider them a very valued partner in our community, so, uh, congratulations, I definitely wanna be a co-sponsor on this, and, um, look forward to, um, a tremendous amount of blessings bestowed upon us from that organization in the future, thank you.
Alright, thank you, Madam Clerk, please add Alderman from the twenty-second, Alderwoman from the nineteenth.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President, uh, I would like to definitely have my name added as a co-sponsor, but let me just share with you and the rest of the community, this is an organization that goes above and beyond what I consider to be, uh, community involvement. They are always present, and when I say present, present en masse, whenever there is a task that needs to be done in the city on behalf of others, and they're always at the forefront to offer their facility when there's a need for community to come and, uh, have, uh, decisions made and/or just simply talk about issues in our community. Uh, these men are just, uh, so much, I can't even have enough words for them. Uh, I show up at things to volunteer, they're already there en masse, it's just amazing, I don't care what part of town, it's, it's a regional thing with them, so I really do appreciate them, and I appreciate the way that they conduct themselves, thank you.
Alright, thank you, Alderwoman from nineteenth, Madam Clerk, please make note of that, add Alderman from nineteenth, Alderwoman from the fifth.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President and members of the board, I, uh, too would like to congratulate, uh, the Qs, uh, they are my brothers too, my, my brother, uh, since becoming in, uh, a part of the fraternity, they have adopted me, and it is too many of them to name, but they are all such, uh, brothers, they, um, they operate and work in many, uh, capacities throughout the city, and their work truly speaks for, uh, for them. I can, uh, count on so many occasions when they came in the fifth ward to help me, uh, volunteer, so I definitely would like to congratulate my favorite Q, my brother Rodney Hubbard, and just so many of all the other, uh, brothers in the fraternity for just doing the excellent, um, work that they do, so I too would like to be added as co-sponsor, thank you.
Alright, alright, thank you, Alderwoman, uh, Madam Clerk, please make note of that, add Alderman from the fifth, Alderman, Alderman from the twenty-third.
Yes, uh, yes, um, I do, congratulations, but I would offer that we should do this one in bank.
It's been moved, Alderman from the twenty-third, that we make this resolution. Second. Second, second about Alderman from the twenty-sixth, I think it was Alderman from thirteenth and a couple others, uh, any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries, Madam Clerk, please make note of that, uh, prepare another copy of Resolution ninety-three in bank. Uh, Alderwoman from the fourth.
Uh, yes, I, I also wanted my name added, uh, to there before they in-banked it, but I just had to say thank you to my brother, and, uh, they are so, they, they, as you say, they are so much involved, they give to the community. I miss them this year with breakfast with Santa, but, uh, hopefully we can regain it again next year because they pay, they played, uh, a very, uh, prevalent part with the, uh, breakfast with Santa that Alderman Moore, uh, used to present. And I just wanna thank you, President and members of the board.
Alright, thank you, Alderwoman, any further discussion, any further discussion? Uh, Alderman from the twenty-sixth, you recognize the close.
Before I close, I need to, uh, speak on behalf of my brother Alderman John Collins Mohammed from the twenty-first ward, he's having problems with his microphone, but he wanted to make sure that you all knew, uh, that he is grateful for the Omega Frat and their exemplary leadership under Donald Gage, who is also a fellow member of the Hundred Black Men. He, before we went in bank, he wanted to be added as a co-sponsor, but.
Oh wow, okay.
Uh, thank you so much, and thank, uh, everyone for this, uh, for, to helping us honor the amazing work that, uh, Upsilon Omega does in the city of St. Louis and the region, as Marlene, as Alderwoman Davis did.
Alright, thank you. Mr. Gage, you, any final words? I could tell you one thing, uh, you know, uh, yeah, I, I absolutely love the Qs, but one of the toughest wrestling matches I ever had was with a Q, uh, when we were getting ready to go to Nationals, he broke my rib, so I still hold a grudge. Yeah, two brands right here, one here, one here, he was a scary guy.
Well, well, we call that wrecking, so that's what comes along with all this, we, we're trained for that.
Alright, so you recognize if there's any further comments before you leave.
Actually, I'm not, I'm not a sensitive person, but you guys got my eyes watering this morning, it means a lot for all the accolades you give me to my organization, and it just, it's, it's very touching, we, we go out there to work in service, we never look for anything, but we just rally together, but it just feels good when your peers, your cohorts in the city just notice what you do, it, it definitely, it mean, it means a lot, you'd be surprised. Cause even tomorrow morning, we going out at eight-thirty in the morning to do a full drive for the, uh, NAACP County Branch, but still again, we, we're constantly doing something, like you say, we go in volumes.
Yeah.
So a lot, lot of time they see us coming at the, uh, backpack drives or whatever, police see us coming, they say, we done, the Qs are here now, they got it. So you get, you get, you get two for one with us, we get service and security. But again, I said, I'd like to thank you all for this time and that resolution, I would let the brothers definitely know that it went down, hands up, thank you again.
Alright, you're welcome, congratulations.
And I, and I see you in the fall, Alderman Reed, to be on the next, uh, twenty-twenty-one line, thank you.
Alright, you're welcome.
Grab, it's not too late, sir, I'm re, I'm reproofing.
Alright, let's give, let's give Donald Gage and the Qs a big round of applause. Thanks, thanks Donald, thanks brother. It's been moved by Alderman from the ni- Alderman from nineteenth, second about Alderman from twenty-second, that we adopt our courtesy resolutions calendar, all in favor signify by saying aye.
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 With that, motion adopted, with that, we will return to our regular order business, introduction of honored guest, Ian Alderman from the twenty-third.
As always, I, like, has my special guest, my good friend, Greg Meyer.
Welcome Greg. Any further introductions, any further introductions? Any further introductions? Alderman from the tenth, like to wrap us up.
Certainly, thank you, Mr. President, members of the board, today's the twenty-ninth of January, this is National Fun at Work Day, so everybody enjoy yourselves. More importantly, on, uh, this day in nineteen eighty, the Rubik's Cube was, made its debut, but, uh, this last Tuesday, the twenty-sixth, was the birthday of someone who spent a lot of time down here at the board, a very good friend of ours, uh, Mr. Fred Stefan turned eighty-five, we'd like to all wish Freddie a happy birthday.
Yeah.
He was, uh, one of my best friends, my father's friends, you can blame him for me being, uh, an Alderman, so if you don't like me, call Freddie and tell him.
Alright, let's give Fred a big round of applause. Fred was legendary when, uh, he was clerk in the Board of Aldermen. Approval of the minutes.
Approval of the minutes dated Friday, January the twenty-second, twenty-twenty-one.
Alderman from twenty-second, you recognize on approval of the minutes.
Mr. President, members of the board, I move for approval of the minutes dated Friday, January the twenty-second, twenty-twenty.
Second.
Second about Alderman.
Twenty-twenty-one.
Twenty-twenty-one, yeah.
Now, second again.
Uh, twenty-twenty-one, Alderman from twenty-second.
Two, twenty-twenty-one, I'm sorry, that's, let me say that, restate my motion, Mr. President, I like to move for the approval of the minutes dated Friday, January the twenty-second, twenty-twenty-one.
Alright, it's been moved by Alderman from twenty-second, second about Alderman from, uh, from the tenth, that we approve the minutes dated Friday, January twenty-second, twenty-twenty-one, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, motion carries. Report of city officials.
Report of city officials can be found in A, B, and C of the agenda and has been placed in the Alderman's mailboxes. Dear members of the board, I have the pleasure to submit the following individuals for reappointment to the Missouri History Museum Sub-District Advisory Board. The reappointment of Mr. Gilberto Penella, whose term will expire September thirtieth, twenty-twenty-four, the reappointment of Mr. Thomas Grady, whose term will expire December thirtieth, twenty-twenty-four, I respectfully request your approval of the appointment, sincerely, Lyda Cruz, the mayor.
And, uh, Alderman from the twenty-fifth, you recognize on the mayor's appointment to the Missouri History Museum Sub-District Advisory Board. Alderman from the twenty-fifth. Would anyone else like to, uh, Alderman from the first?
Um, I, I'm not, I was gonna ask a question, I, I, I can't sponsor, I didn't, I'm not in that, I didn't agree to do that.
I'm, Mr. President, I'm present.
Alderman from twenty-fifth, you recognize on the mayor's appointment to the Missouri History Museum Sub-District Advisory Board.
Thank you, Mr. President, I would like to, uh, refer the, uh, nominations over to the Parks Committee hearing, we actually have a meeting scheduled for nine AM next Tuesday.
Okay, it's been moved by Alderman from the twenty-fifth, second, entertain a second on that motion.
Second.
Second about Alderman from thirteenth, any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, motion carries.
That is.
Please assign the appointment, sir.
Will do, that is extent of report of city officials.
Would anyone like to take any bills off of any of our informal calendars, bills or resolutions?
Miss, Mr. President, uh, I would like to take Board Bill forty-four off of the informal calendar and put it on the regular perfection calendar, please.
Madam Clerk, please make note of that, place Board Bill forty-four on the regular perfection calendar, Alderwoman from the sixth.
Thank you, Mr. President, I'd like to remove Board Bill one-seventy-five off the perfection, um, informal calendar and place it on the regular perfection calendar.
Alright, Madam Clerk, please make note of that, Board. Say Board Bill one-seventy-five.
One-seventy-five, thank you.
One-seventy-five, Madam Clerk, please make note of that, place Board Bill one-seventy-five and Board Bills forty-four at the end of the regular perfection calendar.
So noted.
Would you like, anyone like to take any further bills or resolutions off of any of our informal calendars? Any further bills or resolutions, we've dispensed with line items, seven. Through ten. First reading of Board Bills.
We have none.
Reference to committee.
We have none.
Second reading.
The following Board Bills were reported out of the HUSS Committee with the due pass recommendation. Board Bill two-zero-three sponsored by Alderwoman Davis, Alderwoman Hubbard, Alderman Odenberg, Alderwoman Boyd, Alderwoman Evans, and Alderman Boyd, and ordinance pertaining to the Central Baptist Church located at twenty-eight forty-two Washington Boulevard having, as subject matter, the designation of the property as City of St. Louis Landmark containing definitions, landmark, standards, and a severability clause. Board Bill two-thirty-eight sponsored by Alderwoman Murphy, President Reed, and the following Alder Persons, Alderman Boyd, Davis, Odenberg, Calder, Boyd, Evans, Gunther, and Negracia. The bill amends ordinance six-seven-one-one-nine to prohibit employers and labor organizations from advertising that individuals of a certain age, race, creed, color, sexual orientation, gender identity, national origin, religion, or disability, or, or not accepted for employment or membership, and to prohibit landlords from declining rental applicants because they are victims of domestic dating, or sexual violence, or stalking, or construing such violence as a violation or cause for termination of lease, and to allow landlords to, to bifurcate leases to remove offenders and allow victims to remain. The following Board Bills were reported out of Streets Committee with the due pass recommendation. Board Bill one-forty-six Committee Sub sponsored by Alderwoman Navarro and Alderwoman Negracia, and ordinance amending ordinance seven-zero-eight-nine-two to require certification of network need, or proof of other legal exceptions and applications for installation of small wireless facilities or new modify utility poles in the right-of-way, adjacent to the front line, to the front lot, lot, single line of single-family lots contained emergency clause and a severability clause. Board Bill one-fifty-five sponsored by Alderman Bosley, and ordinance established in a maximum posted speed limit of twenty miles per hour for all traffic traveling upon sections of roadways in area zone A, single-family residential district, B, two-family residential, residential district, C, multiple-family dwelling district, multiple-family dwelling district, D, multiple-family dwelling, multiple-family residential dwelling district, and E, multiple-family dwelling district that are within the area defined herein as the third ward residential speed limit district. Board Bill two-thirty-four as amended sponsored by Alderman Calder, and ordinance authorizing and directing the treasurer of the city of St. Louis acting in her capacity as the supervisor of parking to enter into a real estate sale contract to sell one-zero-one-four Spruce QOZBLC, certain real estate belonging to the city of St. Louis located in city block zero-four-three-four, and generally known as ten-fourteen Spruce, authorizing the treasurer and other city officials to enter into a parking license memorandum of license and a development agreement, and granting such, and granting such further authority to take further actions as are necessary to effectuate real estate property, I'm sorry, real estate sale contract, and contain the severability and emergency clause. The following Board Bills were reported out of the Transportation and Commerce Committee with a due pass recommendation. Board Bill two-zero-eight sponsored by Alderwoman Davis, and ordinance recommended and approved by the Board of Estment Apportionment, authorizing and directing the director of airports and the control of the city of St. Louis to enter into and execute on behalf of the city the lease agreement with the Boeing Company AL-one-seven-six between the city and the Boeing Company, containing the severability clause and an emergency clause. Board Bill two-zero-nine sponsored by Alderwoman Middlebrook, and ordinance authorizing the execution of a new, a new lease agreement between the city of St. Louis, Missouri, and SCF Lewis and Clark Terminals LLC for a period of two years and seven months with a one-seven-year and two-five-year mutual options for the purpose of parking automobiles and storage and interior receiving, processing, storing, and transloading of cargo and/or a warehouse of distribution center for products at two-two-two, two-two-two-two-six, I'm sorry, twenty-two-twenty-six North First Street, contain the severability clause. That is the extent of second reading, report of standing committees.
Alderman from the twenty-fifth, twenty-fourth, excuse me. Alderman from the twenty-fourth, did you want to suspend? For Board Bill one-forty-six Committee Substitute, I was told.
Uh, I, I believe that that may be the Alderwoman from the twenty-eighth, she has her hand up right now.
Okay, Alderman from the twenty-eighth.
Thank you, Mr. President, yes, I would like to suspend the rules to move Board Bill one-forty-six Committee Sub from second reading to the perfection consent calendar.
It's been moved. Been moved by Alderman from the twenty-eighth, entertain a second on that motion.
Again.
About Alderman from the eighth, then Alderman from the ninth, any further discussion? Any further discussion? It's been moved by Alderman from twenty-eighth, second by the Alderman from the eighth, that we spend the rules for purposes of moving Board Bill one-forty-six Committee Substitute, uh, perfection calendar. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderwoman Tyus.
Aye.
Alderwoman Middlebrook.
Aye.
Alderman Bosley.
Aye.
Alderwoman Evans.
Aye.
Alderwoman Hubbard.
Aye.
Alderwoman Negracia.
Aye.
Alderman Calder.
Aye.
Alderwoman Rice.
Aye.
Alderman Gunther.
Aye.
Aye.
Alderman Ballmer?
Aye.
Alderwoman Martin?
Aye.
Alderwoman Grass?
Aye.
Alderwoman Murphy?
Aye.
Alderwoman Howard? Alderwoman Green?
Aye.
Alderman Oldenburg?
Aye.
Alderman Rhodey?
Rhodey's aye.
Alderman Todd?
Aye.
Alderwoman Davis?
Aye.
Alderwoman Spencer?
Aye.
Alderman Collins Mohammed? Alderman Boyd? Alderman Vaquero?
Aye.
Alderman Orion?
Aye.
Alderman Con?
Aye.
Alderwoman Clark Hubbard?
Aye.
Alderwoman Boyd?
Aye.
Alderwoman Navarro?
Aye.
President Reed?
Aye.
Alderwoman Howard? Alderman, Alden, Alderman Mohammed?
Aye.
Twenty eight aye votes.
I vote, stay in motion of Alderman from the twenty eighth, and spend the rules, purposes of moving Board Bill one forty six Committee Substitute to perfection. Alderman from the third.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. I'd also would like to suspend the rules to move Board Bill one fifty five to the perfection consent calendar.
It's been moved by Alderman from the third.
Second.
Second by the Alderman from the twenty second.
Thank you.
Uh, are there any other bills that people will want moved because we should, we can just add them to this suspension? Are there any other bills that people would like moved?
Mr. President?
Yeah, Alderman from nineteenth.
You know, I, I wanna have, um, those are my points. I wanna have my board bills for transportation and committee move forward, but I, I'm gonna take a moment and get all the numbers together while somebody else goes before me.
Okay, uh, maybe that's, um, uh. Like you have Board Bill, you have, um, Board Bills two oh three and two oh eight. All right, but, um, any further discussion on the current motion, any further discussion? Alderman from the twenty second?
I'm just a question, is previous roll?
Yeah, yes, we, we can do previous roll. Alderman from twenty second?
Yes, Mr. President, would it just be easy for all bills that on the second reading calendar be moved to the perfection calendar, perfection informal calendar?
Yes, it'd be easier if, if, um, as long as everybody who has bills on that calendar, uh, would want them moved. So let's just go through them real quick. Um, uh, Board Bill two oh three by Alderwoman Davis, two thirty eight, uh, Alderwoman Murphy, um, Alderman from, Alderman from the thirteenth. Uh, she's not with us. Then this. Alderman, Alderman from the seventh, do, would you like your bill moved thirty, uh, two thirty four as amended? All right, we're not getting a response from them. So there's been a, it's been a move by Alderman from third, second about Alderman from twenty second, there's been a request for previous roll. Hearing no objection, motion carries. Alderman from the first. Uh, you're, you have to unmute yourself, Alderman.
I had my hand up trying to find out if the motion was to move them, move them to the perfection consent calendar or perfection calendar. So which one did it go to?
Uh, he said to perfection calendar.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
That was perfection now. All right, you're welcome. Um. So any further, any further, uh, bills, any further bills?
I thought I said perfection consent.
If you want perfection, you, we, we can put it on perfection consent because we've already moved it so you can have your bill just by a simple request. So Madam Clerk, please place Board Bill one fifty five on perfection consent.
Uh, Mr. President, I was requesting perfection consent as well.
Okay, um, we didn't include, we didn't include yours because, um, I was waiting for a response. So if you would like to, uh, make the motion right now for Board Bills, uh, we have two oh three for you and two oh eight.
I'd like to request Board Bills two oh three and two oh eight be moved to the perfection consent calendar.
And two oh eight. It's been moved by the Alderwoman from the nineteenth.
Second man.
Second about Alderman from the twenty third, any discussion? Uh, Alderman from the seventh.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board, and I apologize if this has already happened, but I would request a move.
Uh, we can, we can add your bill two thirty four as amended.
Yes.
Yeah, Madam Clerk, please add two thirty four as amended to the previous motion.
Thank you.
All right, any further bills, any further bills? All right, so for this motion, it's two oh three, two oh eight, and two thirty four as amended to the perfection consent calendar. It's been moved by Alderman from the nineteenth, second by Alderman from Alderman, Alderman from twenty third. There's been, is there a request for previous roll?
Previous roll.
Been a request for previous roll, hearing objection, motion carries. Madam Clerk, please make note of that. Place two oh three, two oh eight, and two thirty four as amended on the perfection consent calendar.
So noted.
Right. Uh, Madam Clerk, of the bills that were moved on second reading, um, do you have all of them on the consent calendar, or do you have any on the regular perfection calendar? So we can give people an opportunity to ask them to be moved to the regular perfection calendar.
I believe one forty six, um.
That was on the regular perfection calendar.
Okay.
Your substitute committee substitute.
So that was on the regular?
Yes.
Okay.
Um, Alderman from the twenty eighth.
My, my motion was to the perfection consent calendar.
Okay, so, um, Madam Clerk, hers on the perfection consent calendar. That's one forty six Committee Substitute.
That's one forty six Committee Sub.
Yeah.
Board Bill one fifty five.
Yeah.
Board Bill two zero three, Board Bill two zero eight, and Board Bill two thirty four are all on the perfection consent calendar.
Perfect, perfect, and it was forty four that was on the regular perfection calendar.
Forty four and one seventy five.
Yeah, exactly right. Sorry, Alderman from the, uh, twenty eighth. I was re, I was looking at forty four and I said one forty six Committee Substitute, so that was a good catch. That was a good catch. All right. Dispense with line item fix fourteen perfection consent.
Board Bill two seventeen sponsored by Alderwoman Davis, and ordinance approving a redevelopment plan dated January the twenty sixth, two thousand and twenty one for the thirty six zero one through thirty six zero nine Lindell Boulevard area. Board Bill one sixty nine sponsored by Alderwoman Martin and Alderwoman Navarro, and ordinance recommended by the Board of Estuemen Apportement, authorizing the City of St. Louis by and through the Board of Public Service to accept Missouri Department of Natural Resources Air Pollution Control Volkswagen Trust awards for the VW Trust Grant Program for four hundred and twenty three thousand dollars, contained an emergency clause. Board Bill two, two ten sponsored by Alderwoman Davis, and ordinance approving the amended petition related to the Olive West Community Improvement District, finding the public purpose therefore, and containing the severability clause and an emergency clause. Board Bill two eleven sponsored by Alderwoman Middlebrook, and ordinance approving a petition to establish the Clarence Broadway Community Improvement District, finding a public purpose therefore, and containing the severability clause and an emergency clause. Board Bill two nineteen Committee Sub sponsored by Alderwoman Howard, and ordinance a petition to establish the forty three fifty South Kings Highway Community Improvement District, establishing the forty three fifty South Kings Highway Community Improvement District, finding a public purpose for the establishment of the forty three fifty South Kings Highway Community Improvement District, making certain findings with respect thereto, authorizing certain other actions of city officials, and containing a severability clause and an emergency clause. Board Bill two thirty six sponsored by Alderman Collins Mohammed, and ordinance amending ordinance seven one five two approved December eighteenth, two thousand and twenty, changing the initial rate of levy set forth in section one, paragraph B, to seventy five cent, and changing the election date set forth in section ten to April second, two thousand and twenty one, changing the initial rate of levy set forth in section ten to seventy five, seventy five cent, and placing the ordinance number, the date of its approval, and the board bill number in the official ballot language set forth in section ten, and containing an emergency clause. Board Bill two twenty two sponsored by Alderwoman Clark Hubbard, Alderwoman Ingracia, Alderman Orion, Alderman Gunther, Alderwoman Rice, Alderman Vaquero, Alderman Rhodey, and Alderwoman Davis, and ordinance prohibiting discrimination in employment and housing decisions, including without limitation hiring, advancement, and compensation in discrimination in housing practices based upon an individual's hairstyle, protective style, or natural or cultural hair texture or style. Board Bill one forty six Committee Sub sponsored by Alderwoman Navarro and Alderwoman Ingracia, and ordinance amending ordinance seven zero eight nine two to require certification of network, network need, or proof of other legal exceptions and applications for installation of small wireless facilities or new or modify utility poles in the right of way adjacent to the front line of single family lots, and contain an emergency clause and a severability clause. Board Bill one fifty five sponsored by Alderman Bosley, and ordinance establishing a maximum posted speed limit of twenty miles per hour for all traffic traveling upon sections of roadways and area zone, uh, A, single family residential district, B, two family resident, residential dwelling district, C, multiple family residential dwelling district, D, multiple family residential dwelling district, and E, multiple family dwelling district that are within the area defined herein the Third Ward Residential Speed Limit District. Board Bill two zero three sponsored by Alderwoman Davis, Alderwoman Hubbard, Alderman Oldenburg, Alderwoman Boyd, and Alderwoman Evans, and Alderman Boyd, and ordinance pertaining to the Central Baptist Church located at twenty eight forty two Washington Boulevard, having as subject matter the designation of a property as a city of St. Louis landmark, containing definitions, landmark standards, and a severability clause. Board Bill two zero eight sponsored by Alderwoman Davis, and ordinance recommended and approved by the Board of Estuemen and Apportement, and authorizing and directing the Director of Airports and the Control of the City of St. Louis to enter into and execute on behalf of the city the lease agreement between the Boeing Company AL one seven six between the city and the Boeing Company, containing a severability clause and an emergency clause. Board Bill two thirty four as amended sponsored by Alderman Calder, and ordinance authorizing and directing the treasurer of the City of St. Louis acting in her capacity as the supervisor of parking to enter into a real estate contract to sell one zero one four Spruce Q O Z B LLC. Certain real estate belonging to the City of St. Louis located in City Block zero four three four, and generally known as ten fourteen Spruce Street, authorizing the treasurer and other city officials to enter into a parking license, a memorandum of license, and a development agreement, and granting such further authority to take such further actions, or as necessary to effectuate the real estate sale contract, and containing a severability and emergency clause. That is the extent of perfection consent.
Alderman from the twenty second, you recognize on the motion for the perfection consent calendar.
Mr. President, members of the board, I move for adoption of the perfection consent calendar.
Move by Alderman.
Daniel.
Twenty seconds, second about Alderman from the tenth, any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries. Board Bills for perfection.
Board Bill forty four sponsored by Alderman Orion, and ordinance for regulation and control of the air pollution within the City of St. Louis, repealing ordinance six eight one three seven approved October thirty first, two thousand and eight, ordinance seven zero six zero seven approved July nineteenth, two thousand and seventeen, and ordinance seven one one four six approved May seventh, two thousand and twenty pertaining to the regulation and control of air pollution, and enacted in lieu thereof a new ordinance for the purposes of clarity pertaining to the same subject matter, and contain the severability clause, a penalty clause, and an emergency clause.
Alderman from the twenty fourth, you recognize on the perfection of Board Bill forty four.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a quick question on the parliamentary procedure here. I, I would move for adoption of Board Bill forty four and then move for the introduction of the floor sub, correct?
Absolutely, and then you would do the perfection of that floor sub. So, um, so first just move to perfect the Board Bill forty four.
All right, I move to perfect Board Bill forty four.
Move by Alderman from twenty third, twenty, uh, twenty fourth, and second by the Alderman, I think from the ninth. Was it?
Yes.
Okay, move by Alderman from twenty fourth, second about Alderman from the ninth. Um, Alderman from the twenty fourth, you have a floor sub?
Uh, yes, uh, at this point, I would move to introduce, uh, uh, Board Bill forty four floor sub.
It's been moved by Alderman from twenty fourth.
Second.
That we introduced, uh, floor sub for Board Bill forty four, seconded by Alderman from the thirteenth. Uh, any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye, aye, aye.
Oppose. Motion carries. Alderman from the twenty fourth, would you like to perfect Board Bill forty four floor sub?
Yes, at this time, I would like to perfect Board Bill forty four floor sub.
Been moved by Alderman from twenty fourth, second about Alderman from, from the eighth, Alderman from the twenty fourth, please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, so if, uh, if y'all remember, I, I think most of us were here, uh, last session. I believe the Alderwoman from the twelfth, and, uh, then, uh, one more Alderwoman, uh, uh, Alderwoman from the fifth, excuse me. Uh, fourth, excuse me, pardon me. We're, we're, we're not here, uh, last session when we, uh, when we went over this, uh, substantively similar Board Bill, uh, when Ms. Teresa Page came in and testified both before the committee and then had, uh, uh, gave a speech to, uh, to the board as a whole on the need to protect workers from asbestos. Uh, to, to remind you all, she was a, a worker who had a exposure to asbestos, and as a result, developed, uh, a form of cancer. And, uh, this young woman now is, uh, gone through several surgeries and, uh, you know, continues to fight to exist, um, based on an exposure to asbestos that she was just simply unaware that she was even exposed to. She didn't have the proper training, and she wasn't given the proper protective equipment, uh, to protect her from, uh, asbestos. Uh, ultimately, I think the real issue is that she was never told that there was asbestos in this, uh, on this project, and she didn't have the technical know-how to spot it herself and to, uh, be able to, uh, ultimately say, hey, you either need to give me some protective gear, or no, I'm not going to do this. Uh, we passed that bill unanimously through this board. Uh, afterwards, uh, the Health Department brought a couple of issues with the bill as passed in bank that they wanted addressed. Um, there were some differences between the, uh, fee schedule in the county and the city that the, um. that the Health Department had worked on. So we sought to reconcile those differences. We brought board bill forty-four in order to make those changes. In the process of bringing forty-four through in this session, the Alderwoman from the twenty-sixth and the Alderman from the third brought some issues to me that some minority contractors had with the bill. So at that point, you know, I had been told that there were some unintended consequences in the bill as passed. I have always said that I am open to discussing anything that I do if it has an unintended consequence on anyone. You know, the purpose of legislation is to help people. It's definitely not to hurt people. So I went and I met with many of those minority contractors at the Alderman from the third's office. And we went over their concerns for several others. And this floor sub was brought as a result of those concerns to address those concerns and to incorporate some of the ideas that the minority contractors brought to the table. So the substantive changes in this bill, it allows demolition contractors to also perform abatement work, which was one of the big complaints brought forward that the minority contractors would essentially have to find twice as many jobs should they not be able to perform both the abatement and the demolition work. We were able to come to an agreement here by having third-party air monitoring and sampling. This overcame the concern that we were having kind of the fox guard the hen house, which was the initial concern with allowing anyone to do both demo and abatement. So this was something that the minority contractors brought to the table. We, I think it's a fair compromise here to say, hey, you know, as long as the concern that someone would be able to game the system is addressed, I'm fine with that. I think that's a totally fair compromise. The Health Department also had some issues with the size of some of the jobs. So this floor sub will exempt abatement work from apprenticeship, from an apprenticeship requirement when there's less than a hundred sixty square feet, two hundred sixty linear feet or thirty-five cubic feet of asbestos-containing material. This was a change at the request of the Health Department. This is so that, you know, when someone's trying to do you know, a home repair job, that they're not going through the same process as, you know, if you have a skyscraper that needs work done. So on that apprenticeship requirement, that apprenticeship requirement was one of the bigger hangups in those discussions frankly. Currently under the law, that apprenticeship requirement is in place. Now, one of the big issues brought to me by the folks at that group was this apprenticeship requirement. They thought that, you know, it wasn't fair to require them to go to through an apprenticeship, given the size and scope of the jobs that they were doing, when we then discussed the idea of putting in, you know, some sort of ceiling. They said, well, we want to be able to grow our companies too. And I heard that. You never want to feel like there's a ceiling above you and how, how big you can grow your company. But the underlying purpose of this bill was to ensure that workers were getting good protection and a good understanding of what they were working with. And the best way to do that is through apprenticeships. So we're shifting the exemption, well, we're adding an exemption, I should say, for the apprenticeship language that any project under seventy-five thousand dollars will be exempted from the apprenticeship requirement for asbestos abatement. The average demo project in the city is twenty-seven thousand dollars. So this threshold is roughly three times the amount of the average job. I think that this is a fair compromise. The larger the job, the more asbestos it can be present and the more danger that that asbestos poses to the general welfare of the community. Additionally, that seventy-five thousand dollar limit mirrors the Missouri prevailing wage law. So one of the other changes that the Health Department requested was that we get rid of what was called a final air clearance monitoring requirement, which the Health Department indicated that due to the dilapidated nature of some of these properties, that final air clearance would be difficult. And there would be dust and debris that would complicate that final air clearance monitoring. So after talking to the Health Department, we just got rid of that requirement. So I think most importantly, one of the, one of the things that the contractors brought to the table and to be honest, it's just something that I hadn't thought of, but I thought it was a great idea. So I incorporated it wholesale. Currently, when the city does bids for demolitions, they require the demolition and abatement contractor to carry all asbestos and abatement removal costs. This contractor group pointed out that this was a huge problem for them because they have to bid, currently have to bid these projects blind. So they do not know the extent of the asbestos that may be present on these jobs. So they're putting kind of a pinch where they have to keep their bids low to win the contract. But if they're too low, then they can't cover all the costs of the abatement and demolition. So that puts them in a really tricky position where either they're busting their butts doing work and not getting paid, you know, fair wages for the work that they're putting in or else they're incentivized to turn a blind eye and, you know, maybe not see some of the asbestos on the job, which means that the asbestos isn't going to be discovered. And then it's not going to be disposed of properly. It's not going to be demolished properly. So this group proposed that the city first, before the bids get made, do asbestos inspection and sampling. Currently, we have contracts with companies to do these inspections. I thought it was a great idea, so we just added it wholesale. And ultimately, that, that really sums up the changes that were made to this board bill. I think that there is a lot of good conversation that came out of it, a lot of tough conversation frankly. And I ultimately like to thank the Alderman from the twenty-sixth and the Alderman from the third for helping to facilitate these conversations. I know that at the end, we may not see a hundred percent eye to eye on it, but I think there's a lot of fair compromises here and I would ask for your favorable support. And with that, I'll yield to any questions.
All right, thank you. Alderman from the twenty-sixth, you recognize on board bill forty-four floor substitute.
Thank you, Mr. President and members of the board, and thank you, Alderman Norrion. Yeah, we did have some conversations. We brought them actually to the full African-American Black Caucus. We had one meeting at first about it and I thank you for addressing the concerns and I understand that some agreements were made. But even with the sub, there are still some concerns, most importantly with the seventy-five dollar cap, which is the word, I'll use the word you referenced, a ceiling. It is a ceiling on minority contractors in the City of St. Louis. And I just don't think that at this time with our efforts to move towards racial equality in the City of St. Louis, that this sends a message that we are in support and working with this. So again, I thank you. I thank you for our conversations. You always answer my, all my questions about it. I'm learning about it. I did hear about it from my constituents who have, who are minority contractors in the City of St. Louis. And on behalf of them, I just have to now still stand in opposition of this bill. This is not against Teresa Page in any way because you know, I still keep in contact with her. She's doing amazing. And it's definitely not against unions because I'm not anti-union. My grandfather, who I served, proudly served under the name Clark, one of the fights that I watched him fight was against getting African-Americans in the unions. And like my father, which is now the Plumbing and Pipe Fitters Union. So unions, I've always supported the unions. But I have to also stand on grounds of supporting racial equity and equality in this city and where I stand. And so I just have to stand and make sure my voice is heard in opposition of this still. Thank you for the considerations and everything you made, but I'm still in opposition of this bill this morning.
Thank you. Alderman, Alderwoman from the first, Alderman from twenty-third, his hand was up. He may have taken it down. So we'll go to Alderman from the first. Alderman from the first.
Thank you, Mr. President and members of the board. If the Alderwoman from the twenty-sixth would yield.
Alderman from twenty-sixth will yield to Alderman from the first.
Yes.
Alderman from the first, please proceed.
The Alderman from the twenty-fourth sent me over this bill yesterday. I don't, if you all watched any of the rules, I think you were part of it. We had a six-hour meeting or so yesterday and I actually got up four hours, got up at four o'clock in the morning because we had so many board bills in the Rules and Resolution Committee. But I wanted, I couldn't, I didn't hear what you said while you were still opposed to it. So I wanted to hear that again because I remember initially, I'm the person that raised objection because I heard it from one of the black contractors about her concerns on the floor. And we end up sending the Alderman to the twenty-fourth, he sent it to informal calendar. So what is it that you still don't agree on?
I don't agree to the seventy-five thousand dollar cap that was put on the jobs to where you would not, you'd be able to be eligible to compete for that job without being a union with the apprenticeship program. And I'm just reading through some of the messages. They feel like, and I feel like it's almost a penalization for trying to grow your business. And we know that, yes, they are working more in the, on the north side and more on demolition projects that are under that seventy-five thousand dollar cap. We understand that. But at some point, a lot of us, I'm sure, will want to grow our business and we don't want any kind of barriers or hindrance on that. So that is the only left opposition I have in this floor sub.
Okay, so as I understand it, because I'm saying right now, I haven't read it. So as I understand it, there's a seventy-five thousand dollar cap. So if you do under seventy-five thousand, then you can compete. And if you're over, you can. Is that what you're saying?
That is the understanding I was given, but Alderwoman Tyus, if you would like to, you know, ask the sponsor.
Okay, I'm not trying to put you on the spot. I'm just trying to understand and I will go to the Alderman from the twenty-fourth, okay?
I don't feel on the spot. I appreciate it, but I just, this is just from the conversations that I had last night because I, as you received the floor sub last night and I was glad I was able to look it over and talk with my constituents about it.
Okay, thank you very much. Mr. President, members of the board, if the Alderman from the twenty-fourth would yield.
Alderman from the twenty-fourth will yield the question to Alderman from the first. Alderman from the first, please proceed.
Thank you. Good morning, Alderman. I am, and you know, you sent this to me last night and I told you my story, okay? If you see all these dark circles under my eyes. That's from two days or three days in a row trying to move the calendar. We have fifty-something bills in there. So could you maybe point me to, explain to me the objection that the Alderwoman from the twenty-sixth is making and maybe where it is in this board bill?
Sure, sure. So I, 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 I'll take off my hat for advocating for this bill and try and put on.
Put on your fairness cap.
Put on my, 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 my twenty-sixth ward Alderman hat.
Okay, thank you.
So I think what she's saying is that this seventy-five thousand dollar cap makes some of these contractors feel like they're going to have a hard time growing their business. Ultimately, I disagree with that. I wouldn't even call this really a cap because this is per job. It's not overall. You could do five hundred jobs a year under this seventy-five thousand dollar threshold. The other part of it is that the the, so the average job in the city is twenty-seven thousand.
Can you tell me kind of where it is in this bill?
Let me pull up the bill. Sorry, I don't have it open on my drive right now.
I printed it out, so don't tell anybody. Paperwork.
Sorry, I'm going through this red line right here. So it's going to be page twenty-nine, line five, so that's section C.
Twenty-nine. I see section B. My section C is on page thirty. Maybe that's just written that way.
Yeah, I'm looking at the red lines. So if you're looking at a.
So the title would be asbestos abatement procedures and practices. Is that what we're looking at?
So, yes. So that'd be the big C and then under that, so it'd be C one C there. The language starting any asbestos abatement contractor performing work on a project.
So when I look at C one, I only have. Oh, C is in red. Okay. All right. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. And so that the, the, I guess there's two more issues there. So that's seventy-five thousand dollar cap. As I stated earlier, the average demolition job in the City of St. Louis is a twenty, twenty-seven thousand dollar job. So this allows actually for a job substantially larger than average. And the folks that are doing the largest demolition jobs in the city are exactly the folks that we want to have their employees have gone through these apprenticeship programs. Additionally, I think maybe a misunderstanding here is that these apprenticeship programs have to be union apprenticeship programs. They certainly do not. Anyone is able to go to the Department of Labor and set up an apprenticeship program. You just need two trustees to sign some paperwork and lay out what your training is going to be, how you're going to do it. It's all pretty clearly laid out on the Department of Labor's apprenticeship website. So some of the pushback that I've heard on this is that this is trying to force people into the union. It's not. It's trying to ensure that people who are working on these jobs have a a solid understanding of the dangers that they face and that they know that they need proper protective equipment. And so this is not only for the folks who are actually working these jobs, but it's also for the community surrounding many of these larger demolition and abatement projects because as we heard in previous testimony, even a single strand of asbestos out in the air, if you breathe that in, you can later develop mesothelioma, which is a, you know, just brutal, brutal form of cancer. So I, I think that this seventy-five thousand dollar threshold is, it's a compromise, certainly. Right now, the threshold is zero dollars. So we, we took these concerns. Um, so we, we took these concerns into account and said, hey, you can, you can do jobs, you can do most of the jobs uh, that you're doing right now. Um, wh- when I talked to them about the average job they were doing, it was mostly homes and things that would be exempt under the board bill anyway. However, they wanted to be able to ensure that they could grow their, their company without having to go through this apprenticeship program immediately. Now, I understand that certainly, but I do think at some point you've grown your company and you're doing some of the largest abatement work in the city. And at that point, uh, you, you, you have to look out for your workers. Ultimately, this was a bill to protect workers. It was not a bill to protect contractors. Um, this, this, this was a bill to educate, to ensure that workers were educated and that workers were provided with uh, the proper uh, safety gear. And that uh, the community as a whole would be safer as a result of the the uh, demolitions and uh, abatements surrounding them because those workers would know what they were doing.
Um, so you, uh, and I'm, I just read over it. So they have to participate in a US Department of Labor Registered Apprentice Program and in compliance, and I haven't read twenty-nine CFR part twenty-nine, uh, twenty-nine USC section fifty. Um, but um, basically, they would be going through a program where they would be taught uh, the standards for how that workers would have to work under these. Is that what would happen?
Yes, exactly. So, so when, when you uh, set up that Department of Labor apprenticeship program, there's certain work standards that need to be uh, to be met for asbestos. And so you would ensure that um, that folks who had completed that apprenticeship program had a familiarity with those uh, with the best practices there. You know, we've seen in this town um, what happens when people don't go through some of those uh, uh, apprenticeship programs. Uh, just recently, we had uh, two uh, elevator repairmen uh, fall to their deaths uh, in, in a building. Uh, that, and they, they weren't properly tied off. Um, and uh, one has to imagine that if they had the proper education on, on doing that, that they would have done so properly. Um, so I think that, that uh, you know, the education component is so paramount here. Uh, you know, we heard from Ms. Page that she would have never done that work had she known that she was working with asbestos. Had she known that the mask provided for her wasn't going to be sufficient to protect her. Um, the other thing that that apprenticeship program then does is you can take that certificate that you get there, and you can take that anywhere in the country. That's yours. Uh, right now, uh, the way that the licensing works, it's the um, it's the, the companies, uh, and I, I, I need to back up. I, I'm being told that the elevator repairmen were doing demolition, not elevator repair. I don't want to mislead anyone. So uh, the, the um, I, I, I think that the education component is just paramount uh, when it comes to worker safety and when it comes to the, the safety of the community as a whole, when you're talking about something that just can be blasted out into the air.
Okay, so right now, um, are our rules is uh, everybody who does under seventy-five thousand dollars doesn't have to do this? Or is it just minority contractors? What is the uh, process right now?
So right now, currently, under the board bill that was passed last session, anyone doing this work has to pass uh, through one of these apprenticeship programs. So tha- that's why uh, ultimately, I thought that this was a, 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 a fair compromise, cause going from anyone has to, to anyone who's doing three ti- uh, under three times the average abatement work has to, is a pretty large jump that allows all of these companies to continue doing what it is they're doing without going through the um, the apprenticeship program. And like I, like I said earlier, you can do five hundred jobs a year if they're under seventy-five thousand dollars, and the average demo and abatement uh, in St. Louis is twenty-seven thousand dollars. So there's, if, if you, if you're looking for the work, there's plenty of work to be had there.
Do we at some point, so um, and I told you this, my uncle uh, worked in the Ford plant up in Michigan, and he died of, he's mesothelioma from asbestos exposure um, a few years ago. Um, so, uh, my concern about the workers is that, do we at some point see uh, ourselves um, slowly making it for everything? Because uh, I do want the black businesses to grow. I do do that, uh, but that's like saying let a restaurant grow, but only pay your uh, workers a dollar an hour or whatever, you know? We, there is a balancing there. So do you anticipate that sometime we would maybe uh, lower this threshold? Because as you said, if we're doing up to uh, seventy-five thousand dollars, you, and if you do a hundred, a fifty, at fifty thousand dollars, you're exposing the workers, okay?
Um, I, I couldn't agree with you more.
And then my other, so my question on the other side though is, this program, and I don't know enough about it. Is it, a lot of times with small, especially I can talk to black businesses. When we talk about all you have to do is just this, it really is very cost prohibitive a lot of time. It's a, a time prohibitive because small businesses, a lot of time, the owner is the person that's doing it. Um, and so if you have to go through training, that's taking you off of uh, uh, doing the job. So um, do you know what the program is like?
Yeah, my, my understanding from uh, from uh, talking to, to, to folks who know more about it than I do frankly, is that it's uh, uh, roughly a week's worth of uh, both in-class and on-site um, training. And that, you know, it doesn't have to be your company's apprenticeship program. So if you have Tyus demolition, you don't have to have the Tyus demolition uh, apprenticeship program. You can go through any apprenticeship program uh, recognized by the Department of Labor and, and meet this requirement. So um, you could go, in, any one of these contractors could set them, set it up, or a group of them could, or uh, a, a trade industry could come together to do this. Um, there, there are various ways of actually getting there. And ultimately, as I, I stated previously, if, if, if I work for Tyus Construction and I'm doing my demo work, um, and I get this apprenticeship, uh, then I can go work at Bosley Construction, and I have that uh, that certificate, it's mine. I can take it anywhere. Um, and so that also ultimately helps the, the worker.
So is right now that the only people in the city of St. Louis that have those apprenticeships are unions right now? Do you know the answer to that?
I don't know the answer to that. Um, but I do know that the that if that is a concern, when I, when I looked at the Department of Labor, it takes less than two weeks to get one of these apprenticeships set up.
Okay, so what I'm saying, so you can set it up, okay, and you have to, do you know, do you know the monetary costs? At all? Do you know that at all?
Um, I don't off the top of my head. I'd be happy to, to uh, here, let, 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 let me see if I can figure that out while we are, um, while, while we're having.
I'm just saying that a lot of times you say just, and then what we think is just may not be just to somebody else. That may be prohibitive. And uh, a lot of times the unions, which I am pro-union, but I, I'm also pro-African-American businesses. And so a, a lot of times they have things set up and control it. I know when I was the Chair of Public Safety, as soon as I got to be the Chair of Public Safety, I got picked up by then former uh, Stacy uh, Stark, uh, Tracy, what's her name? Stacy Trump. Alderman Triplet. Her father was a uh, a lobbyist for a union, and he took me by um, a site over behind St. Louis University Hospital. And he wanted to get rid of a, a option that would let uh, small uh, contractors instead of having um, uh, they could have two, seven, or two, eight, or nine, ten, or whatever, up to fourteen tons of air conditioning. And they didn't have to go through certain procedures. And he was trying to tell me, he showed me that there were some uh, other people from another country working, and he wanted to get rid of that. But when I called the black contractors, they said, if you get rid of that, then that will put us out of business, cause that's mostly what we do. And so sometimes I think the unions have a, a corner on stuff, and they don't see how it's affecting.
So, um, right. So I, I, I just heard back, um, so there is no cost to establishing the apprenticeship program. The only cost would be if they chose to use an attorney to help set it up. Um, but they, 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 they are not required to use an attorney to set it up.
Okay, and then you said the program is only a week, did you say, or two weeks?
Yeah, I, I think it's about a week of uh, both on-the-job learning and then classroom learning. Um, and then uh, all uh, graduates of the apprenticeship program receive a portable nationally-recognized credential.
Okay, um, I'm gonna, I'm not gonna ask any more questions, cause um, I want to try to hop on and see if I can read uh, part of twenty-nine CFR, cause I don't really understand if there's not any cost why they would be opposed, why is the opposition to that? And maybe somebody else, I see Alderman Bosley's hand is up, so maybe he could uh, make me understand why they would be opposed to that. Uh, Mr. President, I have no further questions. Thank you. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Thank you. Ald- Alderman from the third.
Uh, with Alderman, uh, Ryan, you?
Alderman from the twenty-fourth will yield to the Alderman from the third.
Absolutely.
Alderman from the third, please proceed.
Thank you. Uh, I definitely appreciate the, the work. Definitely have been making a, a great effort to try to figure out how we can make this an amicable solution for everybody. So, um, you know, definitely appreciate the work you've been doing. Of course, this is um, s- s- never-ending trying to make everybody happy, because you'll always disappoint somebody in the long run at some point, place. But we want to try to find like a level a, a place where we all can at least see that we got a little bit here and there. So, uh, once again, I do see you made good strides towards doing those things. Um, the last time we did have the discussion, we had a very long conversation about this on a, uh, during our board session. Um, there are some specific changes that me and you spoke about in particular, um, uh, just a few days ago. Um, can you just speak about those particular changes so they can be um, uh, on record for those individuals who feel like they are affected? And may have not had this conversation since getting this last uh, piece, because I did just receive the board bill from you um, yesterday. Uh, and it's, and we know we got a lot going on, so, um, so we want you know, at least kind of explain what the differences are, because people haven't had a chance to really digest it.
Sure, so the, the, the biggest changes as uh, they pertain to, I guess for the, for the sake of this, I'll leave out the changes that were put there for the Health Department, unless you'd like me to address those as well.
Um, the, I, I, I guess the first ones to address are, um, I, I would appreciate if addressed um, the, the ones in particular that uh, we met about that needed to be changed based on what those uh, um, businesses in the room felt like had occurred, they impacted them.
Sure, sure. So uh, the uh, one, the, the most important change, I guess, would be that uh, under the existing legislation, a entity cannot do both demolition work and abatement work on the same job. Uh, when, when uh, we sat down with uh, with the contractors, a lot of uh, them brought up what, what I thought to be a, a valid concern that uh, you know, that cuts their ability to make money in half, or they gotta go and scramble and find twice as many jobs. Uh, and, you know, the, the heart of this bill was trying to prevent people from kind of gaming the system uh, and putting workers at risk by, by saying uh, basically, hey, I can do the, I can do the uh, demolition and the abatement, and no one is gonna be looking over my shoulder. So then I have no real incentive to do this uh, at the right way. I'm gonna do it the way that I can make the most money. And so then we uh, we brought in that third-party air monitoring uh, in order to um, to uh, not have kind of the fox watching the hen house. We have the uh, the third-party air monitoring. Uh, and that was a request of the Minority Contracting Group. Um, the uh, un- another issue that the Minority Contracting Group had was the apprenticeship requirement just in general. Uh, now that was because, as a result of the legislation, kind of day one, uh, they were gonna have to go through this apprenticeship program. Uh, and they said, hey, you know, we've been doing this work for some time. Uh, we shouldn't have to take a week off work to go to do work that we've been doing. Um, so we raised that, that threshold from zero dollars that if you're doing uh, a, 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 a asbestos abatement and it costs one dollar, you gotta go through this. We raised that to seventy-five thousand dollars. Now, the um, the average uh, price of demolition uh, in the city is twenty-seven thousand dollars. So that that allows for a, 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 a large chunk of the work that's currently being done that they are currently doing uh, to be done. Um, and they, they even said, well, we want to be able to grow our businesses. And uh, ultimately, I think if the average job is twenty-seven thousand dollars, and you're looking at a, a seventy-five thousand dollar threshold before you have to go through this, that's a, that's a pretty substantial job. I think that a lot of folks would love to be getting seventy-five thousand dollar jobs uh, 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 regularly. So then uh, lastly, and uh, I think uh, very importantly, cause I think that this is a, a great solution uh, that, that was brought to the table that I just hadn't uh, considered before. Um, right now, when the city bids for demolitions, the demolition contractors, they carry the uh, burden of the cost of all asbestos uh, abatement and uh, removal costs. Uh, right now, it's a blind bidding process. So they're not sure what they're getting into. They're just looking at this building and going, okay, well, I can do it for X. I can do it for Y. But they're not actually sure if there's asbestos present in that building. They're, they're looking at old building permits, they're looking at the uh, era that the building is from, and trying to kind of make educated guesses on the, what's inside of those walls. And uh, that's a, it's an untenable position for them, and I uh, I would not like to be in a position where I had to make a blind bid on something, and then uh, either, cause there, of course, anytime you're bidding something, there's an incentive to come in with a low bid, so you get the work. Um, but if that bid is too low because you didn't uh, anticipate the amount of asbestos present, then you have uh, a real incentive to, to kind of turn your head the other way, because uh, either you're going to do the work the right way and feel the pinch on that financial squeeze from coming in low on your bid, even though there was more uh, abatement and remediation than you thought there was going to be, or else you gotta uh, turn your head and uh, not do things the proper way if you want to maximize the profits on the, on the job. And so this puts uh, you know, smaller contractors in a, in a hard place. Uh, and so now, under this floor sub, the city of St. Louis would be doing the testing prior to putting the uh, demo project out for bid. So those contractors would know the asbestos present, and they could take that into account in their bid. So that, that, they don't have uh, an incentive to uh, underbid for the amount of asbestos present or to uh, to, to try and cover uh, for asbestos that's not there, and, and come in with a high bid. So this'll allow them hopefully to streamline the bidding process and to make bids that uh, are more in line with uh, a breakdown of what they would like to actually be paid for their work and what they're comfortable bidding.
Okay, and so I definitely appreciate that. There was also some concern about that apprenticeship piece piece that you uh touched on that that would um also cause some some harm to uh some businesses. Could you kind of talk about that a little bit?
Sure, sure. Um, so I think that uh ultimately, the heart of this bill uh always has been about protecting workers and the community at large from asbestos and asbestos in the air. This was never a bill about protecting the bottom line of contractors. Uh, when the contractors brought these concerns to me, I was open to to hearing them out and to um to talking to them and 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 to to going back to the drawing board and making some changes to try and carve out uh places for for people, um, and so that nobody felt left behind by this legislation. But I mean, make no mistake, this legislation is progress. Um, and it's progress to ensure that uh people are getting the right training and that they're getting the right protective gear. And if you're doing large asbestos projects, I do believe that we need to make sure that the people who you're sending into those buildings have the right protective gear and that they know what they're doing. Because or else people get sick, people die. Uh, and the the crazy thing about asbestos is it's not just the uh, the bosses and the workers and and those folks who are getting exposed. It's the the the, you know, little kid two blocks away walking to school. If this, you know, you send a wrecking ball through an old building, asbestos gets everywhere in the air. It only takes a single strain of asbestos breathed in one time and then you have a risk of mesothelioma. And so, I mean, the the we're we're i- it sounds like fear mongering, but I can assure you it's certainly not, uh, but the if if you turn on the TV, uh, you you can still see all of these uh lawyer ads for, you know, have have you or a loved one been exposed to asbestos? Do you have mesothelioma? Because mesothelioma is a form of cancer that only comes from uh being exposed to asbestos. So we know when someone gets mesothelioma that they had an asbestos exposure. The problem is figuring out where backwards in their lifetime, you know, if you hit that rewind button, where did you have that asbestos exposure? And if you just happen to be a kid living in a neighborhood with a lot of demolitions going on, you may be exposed several times through no fault of your own, not even know it, and then, you know, ten, twenty, thirty, forty, fifty years down the line, all of a sudden uh, you have these major uh disastrous health issues. Uh, and we can prevent that from happening. We can, we can legislate that folks need to know what they're doing and uh and they they need to provide their uh their their employees with the proper equipment and the proper training to ensure that the community at large is safe and that their employees are safe. And so to the extent that folks have a problem with the apprenticeship language, uh, I understand, uh, you know, it's it's never popular to come in and regulate anything that people are already doing. Um, but this is about the the health and safety of the community as a whole. And I can't think about something more important in our region, given the the health disparities and the equity indicators uh throughout the region. I can't think of anything more important than trying to ensure that the air that we all breathe in, every person physically present in the city is breathing in this air, and I think that we all want clean air. I think that that's an issue that kind of transcends uh virtually every conversation that we have in this room. I don't think anyone wants to breathe in dirty air. Um, and so this this bill just ensures that uh that people have the training, the knowledge and the uh proper equipment to make sure that they're not putting the community at large uh a- a- at risk of harm.
I I agree with you, and I, you know, like I said, I appreciate that. I think um the contractors also agree that those things are very important and they want to make sure that uh the workers that they work with get to go home at night and s- you know, spend the checks that that they get and not have to spend it on medical uh things that they occurring on, medical things that occur on the job, so. I I definitely don't think that that is the reason they had some discontent with it. I think their discontent came from um, how it is that those apprentices get certified, who runs those certification programs with the state. Uh, my memory serves me correctly, there was some um misunderstanding of uh who exactly would be able to certify these these folks because there was some language in the state that was a little bit vague. Can we?
So, so the the apprenticeship program ultimately is um the the requirements of that are ultimately dictated by the United States Department of Labor. If you go to apprenticeship.gov, um, there there's, i- it it lays out a lot of how these programs work, and this is just the Department of Labor's kind of uh minimum standards and 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 the way that work should be done. And
I mean, specifically for asbestos, is there, you know, what what organizations, I guess, I'm sorry, I don't mean to cut you off. Uh, to try to make, I guess, my question a little more clear. What organization specifically right now would be able to certify these people, uh, these contractors who have uh workers that are not certified specifically right now to um uh do any asbestos removal through demolitions and have they, you know, if they come across a contract like that and they do have workers that uh would normally uh, I guess, be deemed an apprentice uh but for that particular project because they don't have certification, who would they go to to get certified specifically? Um, um, within our city or within?
So, so uh ultimately, eh, these apprenticeship, these asbestos apprenticeship programs would have to be set up. And that that's the the purpose of of the legislation. There there's um the depart- US Department of Labor kind of hosts the the program, if you will. They're the ones who give the certification for it. But ultimately, uh, the entities would need to uh, fill out this paperwork, get it over to the Department of Labor. The Department of Labor would have to say, yeah. Um, we've, we've reviewed this. We think it's an acceptable training program. And then put folks through it.
So after putting those folks through the program or not necessarily after being approved by the Department of Labor to set up such program, then these contractors would then have the ability to send their folks in to retrieve and get these contracts?
Yes.
Okay, so I guess during the time where these companies are that are, these these programs aren't existing like uh right now, are there any at all that exist right now? In the city?
I, the uh the uh, I don't believe there's an existing specific asbestos program uh in the city, so uh to to that extent, you know, everyone would be at a an equal disadvantage, you know? But the uh, the the ultimately, i- it takes about two weeks to set up one of these programs. Uh, it it, there's, there's not a cost associated with setting up the program. The hardest part uh from what I've been told is the um the uh getting trustees on board to um to uh actually sign the paperwork and and get the stuff through.
Okay, so why is that a hard part?
Uh, I I I I don't believe that that's a hard part. I think that's the hardest part.
Understood, understood. Uh, so just, I I guess for the sake of the, um it's putting step one and step two and step three, but does not seem just a little bit like um, and I'm definitely not attacking the bill, I just wanna have, you know, a good robust conversation. Uh, would it not seem a little bit like um, we're setting up the legislation for a future uh entity that we really have not have an idea of how these programs will be written up because we don't have an idea of which companies right now, um, nonprofits or have it that'll be set up um, that are interested in doing this particular work and what that program looks like?
So, um, I I don't necessarily agree there because there are these programs elsewhere. Um, but the uh, I think the, another important thing to consider is that this is already the law. And it's already at zero dollars. So everyone who's doing asbestos work in the city right now uh by by ordinance has to go through one of these programs. So this actually raises the cap. This makes it easier for folks to uh to be operating uh in the fields that they have been operating in.
Understood, but then then we put like a, was there a hope, put on it or something like that at some point in time? That was asking the health director to not follow through with the order?
Yeah, I I I I believe that the 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 mayor's office and the health department uh wanted to get uh some of this uh straightened out, but I believe that most of that was in regard to the um to the differences in the uh uh fee schedules and then the um, the final air clearance monitoring, the stuff that logistically the health department had an issue with. Um, so this, this clears up those health department logistics issues so that we can get back to having a health department that is actively monitoring the air quality in the city of Saint Louis.
Do you know how much the contract uh or an application would be uh to send to Department of Labor to become a uh, a uh, sort of an organization, if you will, that um, can approve uh who uh is um a, I'm sorry, who can uh certify uh the workers?
So the um, th- there's no cost to set up that Department of Labor um apprenticeship program. Uh, you 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 put together the program, you send it off to the Department of Labor. They say, hey, you know, thumbs up, thumbs down, either this meets the criteria or it does not meet the criteria. Um, and if it meets the criteria then y- you can send your guys through uh this program. At the end of it, they get the certificate uh and happy days. Uh, if if the uh program that you send to them isn't going to meet that criteria, they're gonna tell you what you need to tweak, whether it be uh some of the on-the-job learning or whether it be some of the classroom learning.
Oh, okay, thank you. Do you know in particular any uh interested parties that will be doing the air monitoring? And how much they're going to be charging for companies um or for individuals to get certified?
So the city right now has the uh has contracts, existing contracts for air monitoring. Um, and so uh ultimately, the air monitoring is gonna be done by either the city or the the, what this board bill lays out is either the city or a third party. Um, but uh a a huge portion of the concern there is also uh alleviated by that uh portion, which was the the contractor's idea that the initial uh uh bids, the the, excuse me, that the initial asbestos testing is done before they make a bid. So they know exactly what they're bidding on, so they can price any any additional concerns into uh that bid. So I think this actually streamlines that process.
Right, right. Un- understood. I I was asking, and I was appreciate the comment. I was uh asking more of like, um uh, you know, if I was a contractor and I wanted to uh get one of my uh employees certified, what what would that cost look like? Um, be it a
Oh, so, so uh a- a- as far as what that cost looks like, uh, so as an apprentice, you're you're gonna pay your apprentice uh while they're on the job.
No, no, I'm sorry. I mean, the cost for the apprentice to get certified at one of those second party, I mean, those third party programs.
So uh ultimately, that would be up to um to the the folks who uh created that certification program. Uh, but there's no cost to create that program, so the hope would be that several of them would develop in the area.
Okay, understood. What what I appreciate that that was a, a one of the, one, I know, one of the biggest pieces that um, you know, were being talked about and needed to at least have some uh some some breakdown to, so people can go back through and see where it is we are and how it is they may or may not be affected based on, you know, based on the bill. I also have a question here on section uh four, C. It says, uh, let's see if my computer just There we go. Says, uh, the building uh commissioner shall not issue, the building commissioner shall not issue a permit for the demolition, construction, reconstruction, alteration, or occupancy of any building, structure, or business unless the permission of health and his or her designate within the city of Saint Louis Department of Health has reviewed applications to which this chapter may apply. I just want some clarity on that. From my understanding, because uh, and just reading through it, that that would mean, uh, I guess we raised it to seventy five thousand dollars. If you were doing like a renovation over seventy five thousand, construction over seventy five thousand um, or trying to get an occupancy of any building, that means that the commissioner of health um, or his or her designate would have to review your application first for you to have that permit issued, is that correct?
Uh, yeah, that's, that's my understanding there is that, you know, if we're, we're trying to make sure that if a asbestos abatement procedures are going to be happening, that the health department is aware of them and that this uh, this uh board bill would um come into effect.
Would it, would it not make more sense because the building commissioner issues the permits? Um, would it not make a little more sense to have them um, you know, send some type of a document down for the approval of a permit? Um, I I would think if I went to building division and I paid a fee and a fine um, for a permit or unexpected to come out and have a permit issued and then have to go to the health department also, um, you know, that that would seem like I'm first of all, there's a cost associated with it. You know, I am definitely paying twice for a permit that one person already said I'm able to get. Um, secondly, um, I I think the departments would it would seem like they aren't working in tandem because if one department is saying yes and one is saying no. Uh, I don't see the, is is this, is this overriding the the building commissioner's ability to hand out a permit? If Frank Oswald today said, hey, um, you know, you're doing a construction of XYZ and we came to the office for uh electrical permit or uh to, it's a seventy five thousand dollars for something that we're doing inside, just, you know, there's, when their department approves this um, the building, the, I mean, sorry, not the building commissioner, but under these rules, from my understanding, the health department has the authority to come in and say absolutely not.
So, so the the only, so the health department is ultimately in charge of, you know, the the air monitoring, uh, air, air safety, air quality uh here. Um, so all that Oswald would have to do is check with um all that Oswald would have to do is check with the health department first. And if the, and then health department has to sign off on this if there's asbestos present.
Right, right, understood. Um, but 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 also the health department would have to come in and um, uh, monitor that area first before um given that approval to Frank Oswald, right?
Um, that that would be up to the health department. They need to uh review um, ultimately is what this is saying, and then uh, i- if, if the uh prerequisites for abatement procedures and practices are met, then uh go ahead and issue.
Understood. Was was this in the previous bill?
Uh, I believe so.
Okay, uh, I I definitely missed this part. Would have had some conversation on it. I I don't know, um I know, once again, you've done a great job um at at working towards uh putting this in a position where we all can have some relief on what initially uh brought stress. Um, but I also see, it's just a few Uh, brought stress. Um, but I also see it's just a few things that I'd like to dig a little bit more into. I, I really don't know. Uh, if I like the idea of the health department having that much authority over issuing permits. That are not specifically only dealing with air quality. I think the way this is written, it's a little vague if I'm, I'm correct. If I'm wrong, please kind of help me so I can see a little clearer. But it's almost like the health department has more control. Over issuing out building permits for construction and reconstruction. I understand demolition. This is all about demolition. I wouldn't be having this particular conversation.
So the, the, they do, but only on projects that fall under the purview of this bill.
Which would be any project that would be construction, demolition, alteration.
So.
Uh, that would cost over seventy-five thousand dollars.
Uh, well, but you also have to take into account that uh, uh, most um. Single-family homes are, the, well, so virtually every single-family home is exempt from this. This, this applies to uh, four families and larger. It is where this whole uh, legislation starts. Um, so for the, for the single-family homes, um. A- a- as many of the homes that are being demolished are, you know, they're single families or two families. Um, this bill doesn't even come into play.
Right, right, understood. Uh, I'm, I'm just looking at it from perspective of how much is coming down the pipeline. Alderman Muhammad has ninety million dollar development coming. And of course, it's gonna be brand new, so I don't think there'd be no asbestos there, but there certainly we, you know, certainly will be demolitions that'll take place. I'm not sure if it'll be seventy-five thousand dollars worth. Um, but uh, I'm not particularly sure how things are going to go in particular. I know we have schools that need to come down. There's a lot of things that are going on, especially coming down the pipeline from the north side. The last thing we want is to have uh, lower uh, air quality values based on us releasing a lot of toxins in the air. Um, definitely don't want that uh, under any circumstances. Uh, but we also wanna make sure while we kind of move through things. And you have definitely taken the time, so this isn't necessarily hastily. Uh, but while we move through things that have been a, a. A long, uh, something with a history of a long problem. We've had very, very bad air quality for some time now. And not to say we want that to continue. We're trying to reduce carbon emissions. We have to start working on these things. Um, but uh, with the development that is coming and the people that have been here within these neighborhoods, the smaller. Uh, contractors who are feeling some type of way about these things in particular right now. Um, it is, I think, within everybody's best interest, once again. Uh, to ensure while the larger corporations and entities, contractors are coming in, that we always support these lower contractors. And give them every ability before changes come to be able to move and ride the wave of change. Because change is coming and none of these contractors that I know have one company set up already to deal with. Um, the certification process. And I think that is where some of that is coming from. Have these things been set up? Like, you know, you know, folks that know the, the way of getting this done. I think that'd be something that we should knock out. Make sure that they have a few certification programs, ones that are minority ran. Therefore, there is some, you know, some, there feels. Um, that there is a level of balance within the city that is not a monopoly on who uh, gets certified and who isn't certified. Uh, therefore, these, these type of feelings won't be uh, communicated constantly throughout the, the, the communities. Where these minority contractors are working in. So like I said, I, I appreciate it. Definitely appreciate uh, you working on uh, bill. Um.
Can, can, can I just address a, a couple of the things you said there? Um, so. So, uh, actually, so first off, I was mistaken when I said four families. It's actually five families and larger. So four families are also exempt from, from uh, this. Uh, I think it's also important to note that this is. As the health department deems appropriate. So if they don't deem it appropriate, they, then they don't. Um, so there's uh, there's no rea- no reason that the health department couldn't carve out an area and say, oh, well. You know, we don't deem it appropriate to uh, to, to deal with that in this area. Um, and the hold of the permit is actually just tied to getting an appropriate number for bidding. Um, so, uh. Yeah, I hope that that helps to, to clear up some of the um, so, so, some of the questions.
It, 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 it is always good to have clarifications. Uh, and of course, we don't have a lot of. I'm not gonna say we, there's a lot of very, very large buildings, uh, some three, four, five, six. So, so like I said, a lot going on. I just wanna make sure everybody has a chance to be able to adequately uh, reap the benefits of the, the progress that's happening.
I, I, I couldn't, I, I couldn't agree with you more. I, I, I hope to see uh, these programs start up. And to see uh, workers of, you know, all, all, all types go through, um. Go through these programs and ultimately, I think we'll, we'll be a, a safer, better and more vibrant city for it.
Okay, and, and one last thing I'll ask. If, if you would commit to, um. In the event that we see that there is some type of a monopoly or some type of a, a. A trail, or if you can, a trend of only a select amount or select type of people. Uh, corporations or entities that are uh, monitoring uh, that program or, or, you know. We have the third-party piece being played more than the actual city. Um, would you be with ensuring that those things uh, are balanced in a way where we have minorities? That are also um, able to uh. Give certifications to minorities. Uh, we know, you know, like I, I like the unions. I have friends in the unions. Um, I think the unions have done a good job of trying to reach back out, but they also, once again, have a, have left a very, very. Um, it's a long history, you know, we're all moving past that. The great things that are going on, everybody's trying to work together at these particular times. But to also do that, everybody has to be on some type of a balanced playing field where you can make the choices. It's good to have options. So, um, would you be willing to help, you know, make sure that there are options if these contractors feel in any way that. They um, are sending their folks and they aren't getting certified. They are sitting up their proposals um, to the department. And, you know, for some reason or another, they are not uh, being good enough to be a company that can certify.
A hundred percent. Uh, and, you know, I, I, I hope that uh. That the conversations that we had uh, at your office and, and since then. Uh, I hope that they go to show that I, I am a good faith actor here. I'm willing to come back to the table. I'm willing to uh. To push, because ultimately, this isn't, um. Uh, to me, this isn't a, a union, non-union type thing. Uh, this is a, a worker safety thing. And this is a community safety thing. And so if, if people are trying to, to, to meet that criteria. And, and they can't, for whatever reason, uh, you know, if it's just like a paperwork issue or whatever. Yeah, send them my way and, and we'll, 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 we'll do, do our damnedest to, to make sure that they, they can get through there. Because ultimately, I want people to have gone through this program uh, so, so that they can, you know, be making. Uh, the best uh, decisions and following best practices when it comes to uh, some, some pretty scary stuff.
Man, well, sounds good to me, man. I, I can, um, I can definitely, um, I, 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 once again, I appreciate it. And I.
Absolutely.
We see that you are more than willing to work things out.
Hundred percent.
Okay, um, with that, I yield the floor unless you had something else.
Nothing further from me.
Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman from the third, Alderwoman from the twenty-seventh.
Uh, Mr. Uh, President, would the Alderman from the twenty-fourth uh, yield a question?
Alderman from the twenty-fourth will yield a question to Alderwoman from the twenty-seventh.
Absolutely.
Alderwoman from twenty-seventh.
Alderman, Ryan, I see that you have been working on this and you've been trying to work with the minority contractors and the unions. Trying to bring this together. But I guess my question is, were you all supposed to have a follow-up meeting after you had met?
So uh, the, the hope was yes, to have a follow-up meeting. Uh, and then, given the uh. Difficulty of one of my uh, colleague's schedules and then uh, COVID. Uh, we, that, that ability to meet was put off for, for more than a week, uh, which made it. Quite difficult to uh, to ultimately sit down and, and have that second meeting. Uh, so. Now, given the fact that we're trying to um. Put the health department in a position to. Actively be enforcing air quality standards. Uh, we took into account, uh. The, the issues brought forward in that meeting and I uh. Spoke, uh, you know, in depth with um. With uh, Alderman, uh, the Alderwoman from the twenty-sixth and the Alderman from the third. Um, who were the folks who brought these concerns to me initially. Um, and it, it was kind of their constituencies, from what I understand, who had uh, these issues. So. Uh, the Alderwoman from the twenty-sixth wasn't present in that initial meeting, I know. Um, but uh. Uh, her, oh, her constituent who had uh, a lot of the uh, the issues, he was present there. Uh, and, you know, i- i- it was actually his idea, the uh, the idea to have the city. Uh, do the testing before um, it, the, the project went out to bid. That was actually his idea. And so we incorporated that wholesale. Uh, you know, we, we, we were there at that meeting to uh, to listen. And to, to take things into account. And uh, unfortunately, given uh. Uh, the difficulty of one of my colleagues' uh, schedules, uh, we just weren't able to coordinate that second meeting.
Okay, and then, uh. Well, this, because I keep hearing apprenticeship program, I keep hearing that. But once a person goes to the apprenticeship, ship program, will they be licensed? Because I couldn't see an apprentice going into a building with asbestos. So. Or would they be licensed to be able to go into those program, into those buildings?
Yeah, yeah, so.
And do we have a program already up like that?
So, so there, there is not an asbestos, uh, there's not an asbestos program currently in St. Louis. Uh, so that program will take about two weeks. Uh, someone will go through the Department of Labor. It'd take about two weeks to get that program in place. So that's kind of the progress here. But yeah, ultimately, once someone goes through that program, uh, then they get a certificate. Uh, that shows that they've completed that training. And they can take that certificate then anywhere in the nation. Uh, and show that they have uh, uh, that they're. Uh, that they graduated from a uh, a training. Uh, an apprenticeship training and they're, they have the skill set to do this. Uh, so apprentice level people do that now. Uh, and, and they would be able to continue doing that under this legislation.
Right. So you're saying apprentice can go into the building? They're not licensed?
So, so, so the, the, the apprenticeship program. The, the apprentices would go into the building uh, under the supervision of other folks. Uh, and then from the. So they'd be on-the-job training, basically. So yes, they are in the building, but they're in the building being supervised as part of their training. Does that make sense?
Okay, no, it, it does. It really does. Because I, just like the young lady that has the cancer. That's the kind of situation I see you putting apprentice in.
No, 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 not at all. Uh, so, so the apprentice.
You froze up, Brett.
Um, so, a- am I back?
Yeah.
Yeah, you back now.
Um, so, so, so not at all. In fact, the, the, the licensure is different. So the apprentice is like a student, basically. So they're gonna go in there and, under the, the watchful eye of. Their supervisor is going to be learning this on the job. Um, so with Ms. Page, who ca- who came in and, and spoke with us, she wasn't being supervised. So this program is to have someone kind of watching over the, the uh, the workers. Uh, as they learn the trades until they get the proper licensure that we say, okay, now you know what you're doing in here. You can do this on your own.
Okay, and so I guess, I guess my concern is, it was the timing of when this was presented to, to me. I can't speak for anybody else, because I late last night, I wasn't called until the eleventh hour. And, and so, uh, I did read over the, uh, the bill, but then the amendment. You know, I didn't get in a time, uh, timely fashion. And so I'm just asking if you would just consider to, you know. If we could put it, send it back and you work on it some more, because it, it's just gotten me kind of nervous. Because it's a lot of ifs and stuff involved in this amendment I clear. And I would feel better if you. And the union met with the minority contractors. You know, I'm in support of the union one hundred percent. But we have to make sure that we're playing our level playing fields, because the minority contractors. Don't have the dollars that the unions do. So that's, that's what I'm asking. But thank you for answering my questions.
Absolutely.
All right, Alderman from the twenty-second.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. Um, with the Alderman from the twenty-fourth yield.
Alderman from the twenty-fourth will yield to Alderman from the twenty-second.
Absolutely.
All right, thanks.
Thank you, Alderman. Um. There seems to be some confusion in the community about uh, certifications and who should be doing asbestos removal. And how it should be done and what the training requirements are and so on and so forth. So can you just uh, give us a little information about currently? Um, how is the certification process done? For a contractor to be able to qualify to even bid today?
So, uh, currently, um, well, so. It, tha- that's a difficult question to answer, because there's this ordinance that's on hold from the health department. So are we going with the ordinance or the practice?
Let's go practice. Yeah, because I know we, we, we kind of missed some steps with the last ordinance, and that's why we're here where we are today. So.
Uh, so yeah, the, the, the practice i- right now is that uh, people can, can bid on these contracts and do the work. Um, now, they, they, there, there's no, um. Uh. Overwriting uh, uh, safety legislation in place. There's no educational legislation in place. Um, which, which puts us in a position where people who don't have the uh, uh, skill sets. Uh, you can get the, uh, so I should, let me back up. You can get certification through the state. Now, that state certification doesn't have a um, classroom component. It doesn't have a, a onsite component. Um, and the, the problem there is that you get people who have that certification. Who still don't uh, follow best practices and still don't uh, use proper protective equipment. That will still, uh, tha- 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 that'll continue to happen until it's the people who are in the buildings. Shoveling the asbestos themselves. Who uh, know what they're looking at and know how they need to protect themselves. Uh, and ultimately, I'm, I'm much more concerned about the person actually doing the work. Than I am about the fact that the person making the bid had a certification from the state.
So let me ask you this. Is it a requirement, though, to be state certified in order to do?
So, not for the uh, uh, the, the, the worker themselves. Um, you know. There, there's some gray area. There, there, there needs to be a, uh, someone needs to be certified when they make the bid, is my understanding. But uh, pretty regularly, people who are not certified are doing the abatement work.
Okay, um, you know, I'm one of these people where process means a lot to me. Um, and this came up, I, I think September, is that when we meet, we met? Um, well, I know the Black Caucus met with some, some. Um, well, I know the Black Caucus met with some, some black contractors and, uh, so we got their side of, of the story. And, um, Alderman, uh, Brandon Bosley was kind of the lead person on. You know, communicating and trying to come, you know, facilitate that process, and it was our expectation that. Um, at the end of that process, that we would be debriefed on what's going on. And, you know, because we're always, I know I'm always looking for the win-win strategy. Um, you know, i- it's too far off than that, there are winners and losers and a lot of hard feelings, and. Unfortunately, you know, here we are again, it's an election year for some people, um. I- i- it's kind of like at the last minute, and I know people have, there's a lot going on, you know, especially with Alderman. And sometimes it's, it's difficult to squeeze, you know, different projects in, but I'm feeling like we missed a step. Um, to, in order to make this a win for everybody, because certainly. I'm for public safety, you know, I don't want to see people, um, get sick from asbestos. I want to make sure we have the right controls in place, I want to make sure the right partners are in place, and, and even the right departments. Are in place and, and working with each other to make this work, and. I, I'm just feeling uncomfortable right now, only because. It, the process that we agreed upon. Somehow it, it broke down, and, and there was no debriefing, and so there's no better understanding from. I'll just speak on behalf of the caucus, there's no better standing, you know, a better understanding from the African-American caucus perspective. And that's unfortunate, and while we're operating in this space of racial equity. I- it's not a good look right now, that we would. Sign on to this, knowing that we have a group of constituencies out there, African-American contractors. Who have anxieties about us passing a bill like this, um, I applaud you, like my other colleagues, you have done some good work. On this bill, um. I just really wish we could spend some more time talking about it, um, I, I think we can come to a reasonable compromise. I, I know this is, you know, we're in the last two hours before midnight. And, um, this may not happen before this session is over with, but I know I'm committed to want to make this right. So that everybody win and we don't have losers, and I'm committed, you know, next session to ensuring that. Actually, before next session, if this doesn't pass out, to really working on this, so that we can come back and one of the first bills read. Is this bill that we can deal with, along with board bill number one, the budget bill, um. Now, the, the, it's, I'm just uncomfortable, and I, I want to share that, and, and, and it's only because, you know. The process that we all thought was in place broke down, and I'm not saying it's your fault, I'm sure there's several reasons. Why that happened, but we are where we are today, and. I don't want people to be backed into a corner, um, I think, you know, every one of us down at the Board of Alderman supports all the great work. That the unions do, you know, I have certainly been a, a benefactor of support from unions, and I think most of my colleagues down here have. And so I, I don't want anybody to turn this into an anti-union issue, because it's not, it's a public safety issue. And I think we all want what's best for our constituents, whether it's the people, our residents, or our business owners that are trying to feed their families. And so I, I just kind of wanted to put that out there, um. I'm definitely in support of making this right, Alderman, I'm committed to you to making this right. But I just think our timing right now is off.
Well, I can, I can tell you that, uh, the, the, the same thing, I, I told the Alderman from the third. Uh, you know, I'm, I'm pretty, uh, committed to, uh, to trying to ensure that. Uh, our health department can actively start air monitoring again, but I, I, I will. Uh, always be willing to come back to, uh, the table to start discussing things when we see unintended consequences of the. Of, of legislation, uh, you know, ultimately, at this point, we've, we've, we've had this law on the books now, and, and we haven't, uh. Even seen what the effects of it are because of, you know, these concerns about unintended consequences. And I think we've come back and we've addressed a lot of those concerns.
Yeah, you know, but the cake is still unfinished, right, it, it hasn't fully baked. Um, you, you have made a lot of strides, you made a lot of good, you changed and efforts, let me ask you this, um. Have you worked and talked with anybody in the mayor's administration, you know, about this and, and, and what their position is on this? Have they been looped in besides, you know, talking to just maybe, uh, the building commissioner or the health commissioner?
Uh, so, so ultimately, uh, you know, the, the administration. In the previous iteration of this kind of, uh, pointed me towards the health department, uh, that this was going to be. You know, their purview, uh, and so I had met with the health department, w- uh, when the health department. Uh, had some issues with the previous board bill that's now the ordinance, um. And, and they said, oh, you know, whi- which was a, a, a bit frustrating, because we did have the health department come and testify in. In support of that bill, and then after it passed said, oh, there's issues with it. And tha- that's ultimately how, uh, how we find ourselves here debating this again. Um, but we, we did make those changes that the health department requested, uh, so, so that. Uh, those changes are included in this bill, so that we can get back to doing what the health department should be doing. And, uh, monitoring the air quality of the city of Saint Louis.
Uh, again, thank you so much, Alderman, uh, I, I, I applaud your hard work, I know you're sincere in what you're doing. There's nothing nefarious going on, and, um, but I'm gonna have to be present.
Understood.
Thank you.
Uh, any further, Alderman from the third. Hold on, Alderman from the third, uh, the other one from the eleventh is raising her hand for the first time, so all the one from the eleventh.
Thank you, Mr. President, um, I would like to comment on this measure, please.
Okay, please, please, uh, proceed, all the woman.
Thank you, um, I, I just want to, um. Mention that I don't know where we got this union versus non-union. Um, yes, uh, union contractors might set the standards because of their, um, apprenticeship programs. Um, this is not minority versus non-minority, um, this is about protecting workers, this is about protecting our air quality. Um, this is about protecting wo- workers versus not wanting to protect your workers, because it affects your bottom line. And that's just the fact of this matter, um, throwing the word union around really doesn't have anything to do with this bill. Um, other than the fact that their apprenticeship programs might set the standard, so, thank you, and I support this.
Alright, thank you, Alderman from the third.
Thank you, with Alderman from the twenty-fourth, uh, yield.
Alderman from twenty-fourth, we yield a question to Alderman from the third.
I will.
Alderman from the third, please proceed.
Uh, thank you, Alderman from the twenty-fourth, uh, quick question, uh, has the health department had the chance to review? The bill as it sits right now?
Uh, I, I have not, uh, gone over the, the final bill with the health department. We did incorporate all the changes that they asked, um, for in, in the bill, though.
So if they were to come back like they previously did and said that, hey, there are more imperfections here that we like to correct. Because we are going to be the ones doing the work, um, would, would that kind of be the same situation that played out? Kind of the first time, and then, uh, supposed to carry out the deed, but not feeling like this is. Uh, the right way for them to be handling the business you'd like them to execute.
Yeah, you know, u- u- ultimately, I, I think, uh, um. We have a, a, a problem in society as a whole sometimes for, for not, with, with not, uh. Uh, respecting expertise, uh, I can tell you that I am not a health inspector, I, I. Uh, don't even pretend to be, uh, the, the, the health department knows a heck of a whole lot more about air quality. And things of that nature than I do, uh, if they come back to me and they tell me that, uh, you know, there's some issue. Uh, regarding, uh, you know, air quality, the health, uh, or the logistics of the thing. Uh, yeah, I, I'm gonna be right back at the table.
So, so there is some, some opposition to some degree, um, I just got some, I can't, I'm, I'm throwing names out there, but. Personally, I can show you, but, um, there's some, uh, people who feel like they have not had a chance in the health department to read this. And it still has, um, issues, um, and just, uh, just so I can address the, the piece about the unions, only brought up the unions. Because that's what the contractors brought up, so sometimes folks want you to, uh, be a voice for what it is that they are not able to say publicly. You know, they said these things privately, uh, the ones with us, and we're supposed to be the voices for the people we're trying to help, so. Um, and so it's not about my personal feelings or, you know, what I personally think about, um, uh. You know, what the intent is as far as the union, this and that, it's not my, uh, goal for bringing that particular part up. It was only to ensure that I did speak that voice for them and them saying that they feel like, and not just, you know, even if they named anything else. I would have named something else, you know, I would have named everything that they named, right, so it's just.
Sure, sure.
They were here speaking, you would have heard them say that, I don't think it's a union versus non-union thing also. Uh, but the contractors do feel like there's a minority versus non-minority thing here, that's why they are saying that they feel like they are this, uh. They're at a disadvantage with this particular thing, which is why we all got to the table with them, to try to find out why they feel they're spitting disadvantage. So, you know, when you say, and not you in particular, you know, when there's kind of the, the misunderstanding of. Of, of, of why things are being said, that just to represent those individuals who don't have a voice to say them publicly like we do. And I want to make sure that I represent those voices and say what they say if they were right here and not hold my, not hold my peace. I'm not a contractor, I don't live with that job, don't know how every single night they're working out the numbers to try to figure out how this will particularly work for them. But, um, you know, when there's grievances like you've done, we try to take, take a look at that, um, so. As far as the health department goes, uh, I, I think they should have, because you were working with them in the beginning, maybe a chance to look at this. Uh, also seeing as they, uh, may have some, some, uh, folks who, uh, would like to read over it. Uh, we, they, uh, I know I just, uh, got it, uh, we definitely certainly have been having conversations about it, or. Uh, other folks who will be impacted by it and have to carry out these orders, just like, you know, we kind of have had other meetings where other divisions are not. About, and that's not to say every division is going to always be involved in, in the legislation piece, sometimes we just direct them to get the job done. Seeing that happen, we most certainly do that a lot, uh, so I'm not negating that, but in the, I think in the best interest of. Bill and the health department's involvement with something like this, and them saying that they still feel like things are not right. I myself couldn't, uh, support it right this second, also, um, I think, um, it'd be good to have something in writing from them. That says that they're, you know, they're okay with this, at the same time, I think with the, the building division. Um, I, I, I don't necessarily know how, uh, we have, don't, don't have anything in writing from the building commissioner. I don't understand, you know, I don't know how he feels about it in particular, or how he thinks this will impact minority workers, he himself. And that division, you know, has been monitoring this for such a long time, you know, we should have some type of an idea of how, uh. I guess, not an idea, we should have some type of an opinion piece on what they think and how they think this is going to be impactful or non-impactful. Therefore, those fiscal things that we're talking about, they can be just worked out with numbers, uh, but we don't have that from the building division. Um, uh, and I, I think that's also an important piece, uh, in, in, ensuring that this whole thing can work out smoothly. Uh, but I, once again, I appreciate your willingness to work and work hard in doing, uh, you know, everything necessary to get this to a particular point. Where we are working towards progress, uh, in the event that it does not, uh, pass through today, though, I'm still willing to work with you, uh. Uh, within my capacity to help out, uh, in any way to help get this to a point where there's some synergy around.
Uh, thank you for that.
Alright, uh, all, all the woman from the first.
Mr. President, members of the board, I, uh, forgot to ask the Alderman from the twenty-fourth two questions, if he would.
Alderman from twenty-fourth, we yield a question to the Alderman from the first.
I will.
Alderman from the first, please proceed.
Thank you, um, the first question is, where did we get the seventy-five thousand dollars? Um, is that just something that became a compromise?
So, so that, that was a compromise, uh, it also mirrors the, uh, state prevailing wage, uh, limit. So, uh, you know, when, when the contractors came in and, you know, that, they were, you know. Concerned that the apprenticeship language was there, uh, to begin with, um. Then, uh. We, we went back to the drawing board, tried to figure out where, where something, uh, that may be a good. Sorry. Where something that may be a good compromise would, would be, and, uh, we, we thought, well, you know. A lot of this has been hashed out before in, uh, prevailing wage arguments. And so we thought that that prevailing wage standard would probably be a fair compromise standard.
Okay, um, and the, uh, second question I have is. Um, you're saying right now we don't have that at all, so right now we're enforcing it for every. Contract or every, uh, demolition?
So, right now, the ordinance, uh, and, and the mayor's office has not been, uh, enforcing this ordinance at the moment. While we try and, you know, hash some of this out, but right now, the ordinance is, uh, for. Uh, i- i- if, if any money at all is spent, uh, you know, o- of one, one dollar of abatement. And you would need to go through this program, so we, uh, we, we lifted that up to a. A seventy-five thousand dollar cap with the understanding that the average demolition was twenty-seven thousand dollars. Uh, so, a, a huge portion of demolitions, even the demolitions that were not already exempt from this. Uh, because all residential, uh, structures for family and smaller are exempt from this legislation to begin with. This is about big buildings.
Okay, um, so, I'm really leaning towards supporting it, um, but again. I just got this last night, and so, and I also didn't get a chance to speak to the person who brought it to my attention, which was a. Black female, uh, demolition contractor, um, and I know sometimes what I think is perfectly okay, they may. Tell me, but see, you don't understand this, I didn't understand, um, when you first bought it, I was for it, um, and that's why you, I think you got unanimous consent. And then only when I heard from the, uh, minority contractors, did I know what the problem was, so, um. And I, would there be a harm if we held this and brought it, I just want another. Like week, I don't, I wish it wasn't even week, I wish I had it before that, I just want to be able to talk to the people that I know to see if this is something. So, what would happen if we held this and perfected it next week?
So, um, the, I guess the only potential harm there, and I'm saying potential, because I don't. Uh, I, I'm not fully, uh, aware of our schedule, uh, at the moment, um. I kno- I know that there's the potential that we have some, uh, additional meetings, uh, in order to pass some of the, uh, COVID. Uh, uh, protection, uh, or excuse me, COVID funding, uh, stuff. So, um, I think the harm would be that if we went on another legislative break. Without allowing for legislation to be in place for the health department to be monitoring. The air quality throughout the city of Saint Louis, um. Given the fact that we're kind of in the, the thirteenth hour of the session here, um. And, and you are the, uh, the, the chairwoman of rules, uh, so, I, I, I know that I, I'm probably out of line. Uh, if I, if I question, uh, you here, but, um, the. My understanding is that in order to get this, uh, passed timely, at the moment with what we have on the schedule. That it would have to be perfected today in order to be signed before we, uh, went down on break again. Uh, or else the, the, the whole process kind of has to, to, uh, restart next session. So it'll be several more months without active air quality monitoring from the city.
Um, so, you're getting something from me nobody else is gonna get, so I'm considering having a second meeting. Um, next week, so, but then that still wouldn't get it through, because, okay. So, but then that still wouldn't get it through because, okay, because you're perfecting it now. Okay, um.
It would have to, you would have to have one that following week.
But that's, yeah, and then we would come back and do it for sign and die. Right, I could do it, right? Okay, and I'm, I've been hearing from a lot of people, and they really don't know what they're asking us. Cause I'm literally, uh, and the clerk knows circles under my eyes from trying to get everything that's on this uh, uh, agenda right now. When, when I tell you I got up for a couple of days at four o'clock in the morning to make it happen, you guys take that for granted. But uh, the staff and the clerk knows that's a lot of week uh, work. But I um, uh, I had already considered doing that, and I really was waiting to see what was happening with the COVID stuff, so I could kind of schedule that. Um, so if I ask you to do that and you do it, then I will promise you I have to do it because you will be giving us a chance to have one more conversation. So I'm asking you if you will do that. I will do not only the meeting coming up, but another one so that it could be uh, done at sign and die.
And uh, um, in, in, i- i- am I out of line if I ask Mr. President if that would uh, leave enough uh, time for this to, to be third read and finally passed?
That would be enough.
Yeah, it would be enough.
Okay, uh, sure, then, then uh, uh, alderwoman from the first, I'm, I'm happy to uh, to um, make sure that, you know, the conversations that need to be had can be had here. Um, I, I've been committed to that this entire time. Um, the uh, the only concern that I've had is making sure that uh, even if it's an ugly compromise for the moment, uh, that we can get back to actively monitoring the air quality of the city. I think it's a uh, uh, yeah, yeah, I think it's, it's, it's paramount. It affects everyone, north side, south side, center corridor, black, white, Asian, uh, you know, that we're all breathing the air.
I agree.
And so i- i- if, if um, folks will uh, will work with me on it, you know, and, and like I said, we may end up with an ugly compromise.
And we may, um, I, I will tell you right now, I'm pretty much for, as I said, I have a family member that's died for this, so I understand it. I watched him um, from a tall, uh, vibrant man. So it is important. Um, I anticipate that we start here, that we get stricter. I think still, that's too much. I think that we need to protect people all the way. But I just still want to make sure that I am uh, uh, I'm hearing everything or I know something um, that I may not know. So I, I need to speak to the persons who brought that to my attention, okay? Just wasn't enough time was when I got it from you. But you have gotten uh, something for everybody, because everybody was worried about their bills. They owe you favors now.
That is, that is a, 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 a big pickup for this.
That's right.
Yeah, yes.
Um, well, then uh,
Hold on a second, Alderman, you, you currently don't have the floor at all.
Mr. President, I have no further questions. Uh, thank you, Alderman from the 24th.
All right, um, any further discussion, any further discussion? Alderman from 24th, you recognize to close.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. Uh, given the uh, uh, discussions that we've had here today, um, you know, I thought, I thought that we were there, or I wouldn't have tried to move this. Um, but uh, after speaking with y'all, um, I hope that you will continue to work with me, and I hope that we can work towards a, a compromise here, even if it's a compromise that we're not uh, all thrilled with. Um, you know, I think that sometimes uh, the best compromises are where everyone's equally unhappy. Um, and uh, so with that, uh, I'll, I'll put this back on the informal calendar.
Uh, Madam Clerk, please make note of that. Place uh, Board Bill 44 floor, floor substitute on the informal calendar.
So noted. Board Bill 175 sponsored by Alderwoman Negracia, and ordinance approving a blinding study and a redevelopment plan for 2741 Locust Street redevelopment area.
Alderman from the sixth, you recognize on the perfection of Board Bill 175.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that we perfect Board Bill 175.
Move by Alderman from the sixth, second about Alderman from the ninth, Alderman from the sixth, please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, if everyone hasn't had a chance, there is a floor substitute in everyone's folders. Um, I'd like to introduce uh, Board Bill 175 floor substitute.
Uh, it's been moved by Alderman from the sixth. Entertain a second on that motion.
Okay.
Second about Alderman from the eighth, that we introduce floor substitute for Board Bill 175. And it's been noted that it is in everyone's mailbox. Um, any, any discussion, any discussion? It's been moved and seconded that we introduce floor substitute for Board Bill 175. All in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion carries. Alderman from the sixth, you recognize.
Thank you, Mr. President. Board Bill 175 floor substitute is a pretty simple change in light of the conversations that we've had with the school district and Board of Education. Um, this board bill, it was a 90% abatement for 10 years, and we are moving it to a 50% abatement for 10 years. Um, so instead of um, holding the um, amount of property tax at about $700, it will be um, a year, it will be around $2,000 a year that the school district gets. Um, this project passed unanimously out of neighborhood development. Um, it was inadvertently left off of um, the Jefferson Connector Project, which we passed in totality with all the properties um, about a year ago. And so I would be happy to ask, answer questions and hope for everyone's favorable consideration.
All right, any discussion, any discussion, any discussion? Alderman from the sixth, you recognize to close.
I renew my motion.
Uh, you need to make, you need to move to perfect the floor substitute now.
Okay, thank you. I will uh, move to perfect Board Bill 175 floor substitute.
Move by Alderman from the sixth.
Second.
Who is that again?
The alderwoman from the first.
Alderman from the first, yeah, yes, yes, you said it so quick, I couldn't get, uh, been moved by Alderman from the sixth, second about Alderman from the first, that we perfect Board Bill 175 floor substitute, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. By vote, stay in the motion of Alderman from the sixth and perfect the Board Bill 175 floor substitute.
That is the extent, extent of Board Bill's for perfection.
Third reading consent.
Board Bill 157, 161, 173, 177, 180, 184, 197, 190, 202, 168, 171, 172, 183 as amended, 185, 196, 198, 178, 199 as amended, and 202.
Alderman from the 22nd, you recognize on the motion for the third reading and consent calendar.
Mr. President, members of the board, I move for adoption of a third reading consent calendar.
Move by Alderman from 22nd, entertain a second. Second about Alderman from the 27th, any discussion? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderwoman Tyus?
Aye.
Alderwoman Middlebrook?
Aye.
Alderman Bosley? Alderwoman Evans?
Aye.
Alderwoman Hubbard?
Aye.
Alderwoman Negracia?
Aye.
Alderman Calder? Alderwoman Rice?
Aye.
Alderman Gunther?
Aye.
Alderman Ballmer?
Aye.
Alderwoman Martin?
Aye.
Alderwoman Grass? Alderwoman Murphy?
Aye.
Alderwoman Howard? Alderwoman Green?
Aye.
Alderman Odenberg?
Aye.
Alderman Rhodey?
Aye.
Alderman Todd? Alder, thank you. Alderwoman Davis?
Aye.
Alderwoman Spencer?
Aye.
Alderman Mohammed?
Aye.
Alderman Boyd?
Aye.
Alderman Vucaro?
Aye.
Alderman Narayan?
Aye.
Alderman Kong?
Aye.
Alderwoman Clark Hubbard?
Aye.
Alderwoman Boyd?
Aye.
Alderwoman Navarro?
Aye.
President Reed?
Aye.
Alderman Bosley?
Aye.
Alderman Calder?
Aye.
Alderwoman Grass? Alderwoman Howard? 27, aye votes.
By vote, stay in the motion of Alderman from the 22nd and third read and finally pass the aforementioned bills. Third reading report of engrossments.
Board Bill 212 Committee subsponsored by Alderman Boyd, President Reed, Alderman Vucaro, Alderwoman Howard, Alderman Collins Mohammed, and ordinance submitting to the qualified voters of the city of St. Louis a non-biding preferential vote authorized by Article 2, Section 9 of the city's charter to vote on the question of whether the city should close the Division of Corrections Medium Security Institute in order to assist the Board of Alderman, Mayor, and Comptroller in the management and direction of the medium security institution.
Alderman from the 22nd, you recognize on third reading, final passes of Board Bill 212 Committee Substitute.
Mr. President, members of the board, I move for third reading, final passage of Board Bill 212 Committee Substitute.
Entertain a second on that motion. Second about Alderman from the 23rd, Alderman from 22nd, you recognize.
Sure, Mr. President, we talked at length last week about this. This bill simply puts on the ballot uh, whether or not the constituents would like to close the workhouse.
All right, thank you. Any further discussion, any further discussion? Uh, Alderman from the 22nd, you recognize uh, Alderman from the eighth.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to reiterate, um, I know we've had a lot of conversations on this. Uh, we had some good conversation in the Ways and Means Committee um, on Tuesday, a long meeting. And thanks for everyone who was there um, to participate in that uh, about what we could be doing differently, what we could have been doing differently since December um, or since January 1st, had we moved forward with the plan uh, to, to close the workhouse. Um, and I, I do oppose this going on the ballot because I think that we have already, um, we've already voted um, as the board. We are the representatives of our constituents, and we, we need to do, we need to take the next steps uh, to, to follow through with our commitment. Um, so uh, I will again be voting no today. Uh, I think, you know, I, I think if this is going to go on the ballot, then, then fine. Uh, we will, we will uh, speak to our constituents about it. We will have those conversations, and we will continue to see that um, this, this is a piece of criminal justice reform. Um, we, Board Bill 167 shows that, shows how the money can be reallocated in a way that uh, prevents people going into jail in the first place. It helps those who are coming out, um, and it helps other city services, and that's.
Point of order.
Uh, Alderman from 22nd, please state your point of order.
Uh, Mr. President, the alderman from the eighth was talking about a bill that is not before us, and could she keep her comments remain to Board Bill 212 Committee Substitute, please?
Uh, point of order, well taken. Alderman from the eighth, please uh, keep your comments remain to uh, the Board Bill 212 Committee Substitute.
Sure, um, I will continue to talk about the workhouse, which is the subject of this uh, Board Bill 212 Committee Substitute. Um, we, we have within our purview, as Alderman knows, representatives, our constituents, uh, the ability to pass these ordinances like we did unanimously. Um, we directed the budget director um, in Board Bill 92 to allocate money differently. Um, we have already, we've already stated our position as elected representatives of our constituents, and I vehemently oppose uh, sending a, a resolution to, back to the voters when we, we just need to do our job. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Alderman from the 15th.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. Um, I want to echo what the alderwoman from the eighth um, has said, as well as the um, you know, the advocacy of the organizations like Close the Workhouse and the Bail Project and Arch City Defenders um, who have worked on this issue for years and have had a, a plan, you know, published on their website for years. And that plan was incorporated into the bill that we passed last summer uh, to close down the workhouse. We, we know what actions we need to take, and um, and I think that this is just a, another mechanism to kick the can down the road. Um, there have been considerable amounts of criminal justice reforms that have made the closure of the workhouse possible. Um, from lawsuits that have been filed um, over our cash bail system, from Arch City Defenders to the work of the Bail Project and um, in getting folks quickly out of um, pre-tri- pre-trial detention and released on their um, and, and released so that they can wait for their court date at home. And, and it is a lot of those efforts, also efforts that have been done by our circuit attorney, Kim Gardner, um, again, to decrease cash bail to work.
Point of order.
Alderman from the 22nd, please state your point of order.
Mr. President, we are talking about a bill on whether or not the voters have a right to vote on whether the workhouse should be closed or not. All the ancillary conversation about why it shouldn't or should be is immaterial to the fact that this bill specifically says, do, it basically targets the voters on whether or not they want to close the workhouse, period. And I think that all comment should be whether or not it should go to the voters, period. Not all the great work that's been done by organizations and so on and so forth.
The comment.
Alder, 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 Alderwoman, hold for a second. Uh, Alderman from the 22nd, uh, thank you for your objection. Alderman from the 15th, um, just keep your comments remain to the bill before us, and should this go before the voters or not?
Thank you. The previous time we uh, debated this, the comment was made that uh, closing the workhouse is not criminal justice reform. And I am responding um, to, to that accusation um, by pointing out all of the reforms that have led to this point. And so what I'm saying is that taking this to a vote at this point in time is moot. We have the ability to defund it, to close it, to do our jobs, to live up to our previous commitments without this needing to go to the voters. You know, I'm, I'm indifferent in a lot of ways on whether this goes to the voters. The voters are going to say to close this down. Um, and I, and like I said last time, I am happy to put the organizing capability of the Close the Workhouse campaign up against any other campaign um, that is, that is going to run um, you know, against closing this. I, I just think it's a moot point. I think that the folks in our uh, communities want this closed. Uh, they wanted it closed yesterday. They wanted us to abide by what we committed to do and close it by December 31st. Um, and we didn't do that. And so we're ju- this is an effort to pass the buck again. Um, a- and so I rise in opposition. Um, but I'm also, like I said, when we debated this previously, I am happy to be on the same ballot as this. This is going to drive out a lot of progressive voters in this city, a lot of reform-minded folks, um, a lot of people in our community who have been negatively impacted by the workhouse, um, and their families who have been uh, negatively impacted by the workhouse. Um, and so I'm looking forward to the uh, the voter turnout that comes along with having this on the ballot. I just think it's not necessary for us to do. We could be making these decisions now to defund it, to close it, uh, and we're choosing not to. So, thank you.
All right, thank you, Alderman. Uh, Alderman from the 19th.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. Um, I don't understand the difference between the fact that we have passed a bill that indicated we need to have a plan. in place. The plan unfortunately cannot be executed at this time because of other things that have come forth that are emergencies within our systems right now. And what is going to happen for us, and which I'm very glad to see, that our president is focusing on how people are housed, making sure that we have the correct funding to do the things that we need to do, and most especially working towards rehabilitating people whenever they are housed, whether they have been convicted or not, but giving them that wraparound care that should be available at all times. And so his first step has impressed me about prisons, making sure that we no longer spend federal dollars on for-profit housing of individuals. And that's going to put more of a burden on municipalities to take care of our own. And also they'll be using our municipal jails to house the federal inmates. So we have a lot to discover in the next couple of months, and I'm looking forward to the overall discussions that can go even further. And it'll help, it'll help people understand a lot of things. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Alder Woman. Alderman from the twenty-fourth.
Thank you, Mr. President. Would the Alderman from the twenty-second yield for a question?
Alderman from twenty-second will yield a question to Alderman from twenty-fourth.
Absolutely.
Alderman from twenty-fourth, please proceed.
Thank you, Alderman. So my my understanding of getting things on the ballot for this next election is that they had to be at the Board of Elections by January twenty-sixth. Am I mistaken there?
You're correct.
Is, what what is your, I guess, path then to the ballot?
Well, you know, you can always go to court and ask a judge to put, to allow you to have it go on the ballot.
And so so that's the plan here is to to then, to to get this through, then bring suit and then, okay. I just wanted to be clear there because I I was looking at that deadline. I was like, wait a minute, what do we do here? But no, that's, sure, exhaust all legal options. Totally understood. Thank you. That's all I have.
All right, thank you. Alder Woman from the sixth.
Thank you, Mr. President. I also just sort of piggybacking off what my colleague from the twenty-fourth mentioned. If we know that this is going to have to go to the courts to get it on the April ballot, and we've already paused anyway, we obviously haven't closed the workhouse by the end of 2020. I think it makes much more sense and it's much more responsible if we really want to hear what the city voters have to say to bring a plan to them and not just ask them the simple question of whether or not we need to close the workhouse. Thank you.
All right, any further discussion? Any further discussion? Alderman from the twenty-second, you recognize the close.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I I I want to say that, you know, sort of Alderman from the eighth ward had mentioned about sending this back to the voters. It never went back to the voters. It's the first time to be offered to go to the voters. We hear kicking a can down the road. This is not kicking a can down the road. Again, putting this before the voters has nothing to do with whether or not we continue the process of closing the workhouse. Absolutely nothing. But this hysteria i- is bubbling up as if it's somehow interfere with the process. I'm not trying to interfere with the process. I'll support closing the workhouse in a responsible way. It has been mentioned that we have been duly voted by our constituency to make decisions on our behalf. Yes, we have, but that doesn't mean that we cannot send things to the voters to get their thoughts collectively on this. I am encouraged by the Alderman from the fifteenth ward to rally as many people as possible to campaign to ensure that people say yes, close the workhouse. It only validates the Close the Workhouse Coalition work that has been done on this issue. It only validates. I am perplexed by the fear that I feel from people about this going to the voters. Mr. President, with that, I close.
All right, it's been been moved by Alderman from twenty-second, second about Alderman from the twenty-third, that we third read and finally pass Board Bill two twelve committee substitute. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alder Woman Tyus.
Aye.
Alder Woman Middlebrook.
Aye.
Alderman Bosley.
Aye.
Alder Woman Evans.
Aye.
Alder Woman Hubbard.
Aye.
Alder Woman Ingracia.
No.
Alderman Carter.
Aye.
Alder Woman Rice.
No.
Alderman Gunther.
No.
Alderman Ballmer.
Aye.
Alder Woman Martin.
No.
Alder Woman Grass. Alder Woman Murphy.
No.
Alder Woman Howard. Alder Woman Green.
No.
Alderman Odenberg.
Aye.
Alderman Rhodey.
Aye.
Alderman Todd.
No.
Alder Woman Davis.
Aye.
Alder Woman Spencer. Alderman Collins Mohammed.
Aye.
Alderman Boyd.
Aye.
Alderman Vaquero. Alderman Orion.
No.
Alderman Con.
No.
Alder Woman Clark Hubbard.
Aye.
Alder Woman Boyd.
Aye.
Alder Woman Navarro.
No.
President Reed.
Aye.
Alder Woman Grass. Alder Woman Howard. Alder Woman Spencer.
No.
Sixteen I votes and eleven no votes.
I vote. Stay in motion, Alderman from the twenty-second and third read and finally pass Board Bill two twelve committee substitute.
That's the extent of third reading report of engrossment.
Report of enrollment.
Board Bill one fifty-seven, one sixty-one, one seventy-three, one seventy-seven, one eighty, one eighty-four, one ninety-seven, one ninety, two zero two, one sixty-eight, one seventy-one, one seventy-two, one eighty-three as amended, one eighty-five, one ninety-six, one ninety-eight, one seventy-eight, one ninety-nine as amended, two zero one and two twelve committee sub.
All other business being suspended, President shall an open session of fixiss signature heretofore to the end that these may become law. First reading resolutions.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, first reading the resolutions, that's okay.
Resolution ninety-two sponsored by President Reed, Alderman Boyd, Alder Woman Davis, Alder Woman Hubbard, Alderman Carter, Alderman Odenberg, Alder Woman Boyd, Alder Woman Clark Hubbard, Alder Woman Howard, and Alderman Collins Mohammed. Gun Violence Survivors Week.
Alderman from the twenty-second, you recognize on the first reading of Resolution ninety-two.
Aye. I move for unanimous consent, Mr. President, on Resolution ninety-two.
Hearing no objection, please proceed, Alderman.
Mr. President, would the clerk please read Resolution ninety-two?
Madam Clerk, could you please read Resolution ninety-two?
Resolution ninety, ninety-two, Gun Violence Survivors Week, where as the Board of Alderman pauses in their deliberations to recognize the week of February the first, twenty twenty-one, to February the seventh, twenty twenty-one, asks National Gun Violence Survivor Week to honor and remember all victims and survivors of gun violence and uplift the resilient voices of survivors across the nation. And whereas every year nearly thirty-nine thousand Americans are killed in acts of gun violence and nearly eighty-five thousand more are shot and wounded. And whereas by early February, more Americans are killed with guns than are killed in our peer countries in any entire calendar year. And whereas a gun violence survivor is anyone who has personally experienced gun violence, whether you have witnessed an act of gun violence, been threatened or wounded with the gun, or had someone you know or care for wounded or killed. And whereas fifty-eight percent of American adults, including sixty-eight percent blacks, then Latino Americans or someone they care for has experienced gun violence in their lifetime, demonstrating the reach and impact gun violence has in communities across America. And whereas firearms are the leading cause of deaths for children and teens. And whereas Americans in cities across the nation are working to end senseless violence by advocating for common sense gun safety legislation. And whereas by commemorating National Gun Violence Survivors Week on February the first to February the seventh, cities across America will raise awareness about gun violence and honor the lives stolen by gun violence. Now therefore let it be resolved by the Board of Alderman of the City of St. Louis that we renew our commitment to reduce gun violence and pledge to do all we can to keep firearms out of the wrong hand and encourage responsible ownership, gun ownership to help keep our city safe. We further direct the clerk of this board to spread a copy of this resolution across the minutes of these proceedings and prepare a commemorative copy to the end that it may be presented to our honorary at the time and place deemed appropriate by the sponsor. Introduce this twenty-ninth day of January twenty twenty-one by the Honorable Louis E. Reed, President of the Board of Alderman, the Honorable Jeffrey Boyd, twenty-second ward Alderman, the Honorable Honorable Marlene Davis, ninth ward Alder Woman, the Honorable Tamika Hubbard, fifth ward Alder Woman, the Honorable John Carter, seventh ward Alderman, the Honorable Tom Odenberg, six, sixteenth ward Alderman, the Honorable Pam Boyd, twenty-seventh ward Alder Alder Woman, the Honorable Shamine Clark Hubbard, twenty-sixth ward Alder Woman, the Honorable John Collins Mohammed, twenty-first ward Alderman, and the Honorable Carol Howard, fourteenth ward Alder Woman.
All right, thank you. Alderman from the twenty-second.
Mr. President, members of the board, I move for adoption of Resolution ninety-two.
It's been moved by Alderman from the twenty-second. Entertain a second on that motion. Second about Alder Woman from the thirteenth. Alderman from the twenty-second, please proceed.
Yes, Mr. President, members of the board, as most of us should be aware, in twenty twenty in the city of St. Louis, we had the highest amount of murders in fifty years, two hundred and sixty-two. We also had thirteen children killed as part of that number with sixty children shot due to gun violence. This resolution, you know, supports the family members who have lost loved ones and loved ones who have been, you know, harmed by gun violence. Certainly, my family have been a victim of gun violence and and we grieve almost every day for the loss of our loved one. Gun violence is a, it's a huge problem in the city of St. Louis and across America, and we can't do enough to minimize gun violence. So I ask that everyone stand with me to support this resolution in support of the families who have lost loved ones and loved ones who have been harmed by gun violence. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Alderman from twenty-third, your hand was going up and down. So I don't know if it, if you want it up. You you were, you were up earlier and it dropped.
Just to make sure my name's on it and maybe let's just do it in bank. So I'd like to.
Yes.
All right, it's been moved by Alderman from twenty-third, second about Alder Woman from thirteenth, that we make it in bank. Any objection? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, motion carries. Alder Woman from twenty-eight.
Thank you, Mr. President. I was also going to move that we embank this, but I also just want to say that I'm grateful that this resolution is before us and I hope that we back up this commitment with effective action to reduce gun violence in our city for the sake of our entire community, but especially for our children. So thank you for helping help prepare this and I guess I'm already signed on. So thank you.
All right, you're welcome. Thank you. Alder Woman from the first.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I just want to say that I hope we send this to the Republican Legislature up in Jefferson City because.
Alder Woman, you can make a request right now that the clerk does that and we'll make it happen.
I I, well, I would request that the clerk send it to the governor and both the Senate and the House up there because for years and years and years up in Jefferson City, we have begged.
Hold on for a second, Alder Woman. Madam Clerk, please make note of that request.
So noted.
All right, please proceed, Alder Woman.
We have begged them about the gun laws that they just made easier and easier to get guns. We tried to even, even though I don't like special laws that exempt out St. Louis, when they kept doing it, we even said, well, can you just not do St. Louis? And it's just falling on deaf ears. So each time we take stock of what's going on in our community, I want them to have to find any opportunity for them to just, not just see it on the news nightly and say, what are those people doing down there? But to remind them, this is, some of this is a direct result of the legislation they've done in Jefferson City. So thank you very much. I'm glad my name is on it and I wish that they would really consider pulling back with some of those easy ways to get guns in our community. Thank you very much. I have no further comments.
Thank you, Alder Woman. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Alderman from the twenty-second, you recognize close.
Mr. President, I renew my motion.
It's been moved by Alderman from the twenty-second, seconded by the Alder Woman from thirteenth, that we adopt Resolution ninety-two in bank. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, motion carries.
That is the extent of first reading of resolutions.
Second reading.
Resolution seventy-eight sponsored by Alderman Vaquero, amending rules of the St. Louis Board of Aldermen to remove party-specific language.
I think that that is actually still, and Alderman from, Alderman from the twenty-third.
Yeah, so, yeah, so I guess first thing to do is move to take it out of committee.
Yeah, because that is still in, in.
Objection.
Second.
Second, been moved by Alderman from the twenty-third that we relieve resolution seventy-eight from the Rules Committee and it's been seconded by Alderman from the seventh. Alderman from the twenty-third, please proceed.
Yeah, I would just ask everyone, whether she will admit it or not, was nothing but games. So originally she told me she had a plan, the Alderwoman from the first, had a plan. I said, that's fine, I'll hold off. Well, her plan was to wait till everything's done and then basically said, we can just walk in on the Democratic Caucus, which we can't. So there was no real plan. So I asked to have this heard yesterday. First, it was supposed to be Tuesday, then Wednesday, then Thursday. Thursday, she finally had it heard. And then she filibustered it until the committee was gone. I mean, she went on for literally, you look at the tape if you got a lot of time on your hands, went on and on and on until she basically filibustered it. And the only, there were only three people left in the committee. I was insulted. I was called a racist, which I'm not, and I'm starting to really take offense because as far as I know, she's the only one calling me a racist. And I do take big offense to that. And again, she just does what she does. She talked for probably over an hour, then she sat still and came up with nothing until there was no committee. When there was no committee left, then even after I said, I have a doctor's appointment at nine o'clock in the morning, she's like, so what, we'll just hear it without you? Well, I wasn't going to trust that because we were doing previous roll. Everybody on the committee that I could tell, and they're mostly all here, were in favor because these changes need to be made to keep in with what the voters voted for. That there isn't, you know, the, the, our rules say majority party. The independent is not a party. And so everyone that's running independent is not part of a party. The caucus would only be the Democrats because they are the majority party. Again, I would just ask for everyone's favorable. You know, and, and, and let's get this out of committee. Let's do this on the floor. I know that at least there's one amendment to it, which I appreciate. All this bill does, well, I don't know, should I be discussing the bill yet, Mr.?
No, what we're discussing is whether, you know, the issues around whether we pull it out of committee or not, and you've covered that.
Okay, yeah, so please, if I, I would appreciate one's consideration. And let's get this on the floor. Let's get this taken care of so that we can work as a group.
Okay, all right, thank you. Alderwoman from the first.
Mr. President, members of the board, I rise in opposition of this motion. I rise in opposition because I have never heard such a bunch of lies before in my life, except for when the last time he told you and Alderman from the twenty-second ward that I was holding the Corona nineteen bill in committee and you know about that, and he was a liar. And he's lying now. And I would like it to think that he's a mistake, that he's making mistakes, but this is a bold-faced lie. And not only that, I want you to know that I did, after the things he said in committee, I followed up and called Dave Sweeney because he threw his name around, he threw the clerk's name around. This is actually in the middle of a hearing as we speak right now. The reason why is we just having this hearing is because on, and you can check, all you all who don't believe me, on January the sixth, when we came back, I offered then to hear his resolution. I did it in committee because I wanted it to be on tape. This is what he had to say. Oh, I don't care about having it anyway because the people didn't vote for it right then, before we went down, so I don't care. I don't care anything about it. I said, Alderman, anytime when you tell me you want to hear this resolution, I will hear it. He did not ask me for a hearing until the twenty-first of January. The first time I could hear that bill because we had fifty-one bills in committee, I'm sorry, hear that resolution, was Wednesday, which we had too much. So we had a second meeting on the twenty-eighth in which we had half of our board bills. And then we had the resolutions last, which we do. Now, it did take a long time because we had mistakes and all kind of things. You've heard me say that Thursday I got up at four o'clock in the morning to be able to manage our agenda and to get everything through. And so the Alderman thinks everything is so simplistic and he can just run the committee. He is rude, he is out of order, he does not listen, he does not wait to be recognized. He speaks out out of turn and he doesn't know the rules. And then he kept screaming about getting Dave Sweeney and getting the clerk in. So both the clerk and I had a conversation. The things he said about the rules are not correct. The things he said that Dave Sweeney said, I called him afterwards to say, did you say this? This is not in the rules. He didn't know what he was talking about. I have never been so embarrassed in my life. There was no filibustering. There was doing work during the times that we were doing work. The Alderman said, told Alderman from the eighteenth, and I'm going to use his name, I don't care about what you're talking about, I just care about my resolution. The reason why rule changes come to resolution is to be, or is because you're supposed to look at how they affect things. I'm so glad that the Alderman from the seventh, they did the second to him because this is what's going to happen because this rule does not affect us now. As all of us should know, if you're not new, is that we actually have to pass new bills on the first day that we come back, which is going to be the thirteenth or the fourteenth. So when you're trying to pass this now, one of the things people said they wanted to do is have a full hearing in rules. We were just starting to do that. We did run out of people because we had met for six hours. In his empty head, he thinks we were trying to filibuster him. I wouldn't be getting up at four o'clock in the morning trying to move an agenda because I want to filibuster him. That's crazy. Doesn't even make any sense. That's something he makes up in his head because when he makes up something, that's what it is. He talked about the rules, talking about we couldn't come to the Democratic Caucus. There's nothing in the rules to talk about the Democratic Caucus. So we were just beginning to have the hearing. He then, I brought up some things, some issues because I wanted to test him if he even knew what his resolution did. And I asked about a continuous seniority and he said, oh, no, he wouldn't do that. And I said, but you know, that's my issue because you guys cheated me down here, so why would you be doing that? No, and I said, well, what about Alderwoman Green and Alderwoman Rice? So then they can get their seniority back because they've been down here. Oh, no, he would not do that. But you know what? That's exactly what his, his resolution does. If we pass it right now, the way it's written, Megan Green skips over Kara Spencer and skips over John Colder and goes to number twelve immediately. There is no reason for that to happen. So because, and, and I'm sorry, Annie Rice and skips over Shemene Hubbard and Bretton Orion and goes up. Because guess what? They've been continuous, but they started out as independent and now they would be nonpartisan and then all their time will come back. So he doesn't even know what this thing does. It does everything. We were getting into it. So when he kept making these statements about what it says, I said, Alderman, show me where this says this. Alderman, show me where this says that. Alderman, oh, it does. Let me call the clerk. No. Show me in the, in the rules where it says this. None of what he says is true or makes any sense and there's no reason for us not to continue our hearing. When we did not have a quorum anymore, he kept saying, we don't have a quorum. We were on previous roll. We could have done previous roll if he had wanted to continue because we did still have people there, but he didn't want to, said he wanted to leave, he didn't want to be there. I said, if you don't want to be here. Now, he's telling me the whole time, I don't know the rules and have to have everybody else to come in there. He was the most rude and he kept making all these racist remarks and all these sexist remarks. Excuse me. I'm just going to say it again, racist and sexist when he was saying.
Alderwoman, hold for a second. Alderman, you have an, Alderman from twenty-third, you have an objection?
I do. If she, I want her censured. I want, every time I tried to speak, she mutes my mic. Call the racist one more time. I am so sick of it. She is the only one that calls me that and I will not stand for it even one more time. Even one more.
Alderwoman from the first, as you know, our rules do, do require people to be addressed appropriately on the floor and name-calling is prohibited.
I did not call him that. That's what you keep hearing, but if you go back, I said he was making racist remarks and he was, and sexist remarks. That's what I said, okay?
Alderwoman, please keep your. Their comments, hold on for a second. Please keep your comments germane to, to, to this issue coming out of committee or not, right?
It is germane. Because he kept making these remarks, but I will move on. I will go on because what you need to hear.
Please move on.
You put him in that committee to do this because that's what he does. No, no, no. He, he keeps the committee so crazy that I have to mute his mic because he gets out of order all the time. But going back to what is going on here, I don't mute anybody else's mics mostly. What we have going on right here, the way his board bill reads immediately, immediately, which we don't have to do. One of the things that it does, which he didn't say he was opposed to, it gives Annie Rice two bumps up because it gets rid of the referral to party. Once you get rid of referral to party, both Annie and Megan and anybody else who gets in here who came as an independent or a nonpartisan, then they have been, long as they still been on this board, then that takes that away. So they have to move up. There are other things. We were just getting into the meat of what he was talking about and he, he couldn't answer the questions. So I've never heard of somebody taking a board bill out of committee in the middle of committee when we're having a hearing, when the Alderman himself, because I set it up for Friday morning. Okay, we'll have a hearing. He says, oh, I have a doctor's appointment. I can't make it. He called in, I want you to know this, we were having another meeting and all the committee members know this. He called in during his doctor's appointment when he was getting a shot or something. So he's like, oh, I could still be every place. Every time he comes to another meeting, he comes to two or three meetings, but all of a sudden, he couldn't be there this morning. And, and so I only canceled the meeting, which you can check and see because he said, everybody something said, she's going to hear my bill without me being there and I don't want my bill to be heard. What he was talking about was resolution. He was not talking about bill. He doesn't want his resolution to be heard when he's not there. I said, okay. Then we continued it till Wednesday morning because I want him to hear the things that are wrong with this resolution. There is no emergency. These board bills, I mean, these resolutions about rules, the things he was saying was not true. I called Sweeney and talked to him at length. He can tell you that. I talked to the clerk. What he is saying is not true and he's fear mongering among the people and said, oh, she won't let me have the. I held it at the first time that I could, but I offered him on January, I want to make sure I get the date right, January the sixth, I offered this Alderman to hold hearings. Now, is it my fault that he waited to ask for his hearing when we had fifty-one items on the calendar? And I turned around and I held two hearings to make sure those items were addressed. Now, he wants to make sure that his things is first, and he said this. And I hope the Alderman from the eighteenth is here, since he said everybody was here. But the Alderman from the eighteenth was there at the end and heard all of this that he was doing. There was nothing to prevent us from continuing that hearing either today, this morning, or he, if he didn't do the quorum call, we would have continued the hearing Thursday. But he's the one got upset, didn't want to answer the questions, never answered a question. I have never heard of anybody taking out a board bill in the middle of a hearing. If, if, if you're going to take something out, take it out because I refuse to hear it. It's been over thirty days and you're not hearing it, not in the middle of the hearing that the Alderman himself waited for to ask until this time. He did not ask any, and I have, I think I have the text that he sent. He asked me on the twenty-first, I think it was. So the first time we would have a meeting would be the twenty-seventh. And I couldn't do it because we had so much stuff. I have to get these board bills and I have to get them through all the different things. And so we did all of that first. We do resolutions last, and that's what we did. And so if it's in his mind, we were filibustering him so the people would leave. I didn't know who was going to leave. I never talked to anybody. Asked my committee, if I asked each and every one of them, any one of them, if I asked any of them, they were leaving. That is just ridiculous and I am offended at what he continues to do. And if you're offended that I say the things that he say are offensive to me and racist and sexist as a woman, I'm offended because he tries to run that committee and he will not respect it and he yells out and then he gets mad because he doesn't have his own way. So if Bretton Orion and Shemene Hubbard don't mind losing their seniority and Jack, John Colder and Kara Spencer don't mind losing their seniority, then that, it doesn't hurt me, but this, this, this has not been vetted, it's not been heard. There are other things wrong with what.
Point of order, objection.
Alderman from the sixteenth, please state your point of order.
The, the members that have been named are deliberate, part of this deliberative body and they should be addressed as Aldermen or Alderwomen and not by their names.
Exactly. So when you're on the floor, you have to, it's corral rules, you have to address them by their ward number.
I know, and I also have to address them by their title. So he is correct. And I am sorry, I'm sorry, if the Alderman from the seventh and the Alderwoman from the twentieth doesn't mind losing their seniority and the Alderman from the twenty-third and the Alderwoman from the twenty-sixth doesn't mind losing their seniority, okay. But that's what happens under this bill, I mean, under this resolution. And I don't understand what the push where you have to do it because he doesn't want it to be any scrutiny about this and it has not been vetted. And if you only ask for something at the last minute, then to come and try to say, well, this needs to be taken out and we're not going to be able to have this, we're not going to be able to have that, it is not true. The things he is saying is not true. If they were, I would say them. I do it all the time. If it's something against me or for me, I try to be as fair with the rules as I possibly can. And what he's saying is just not true. And look, get your little piece of paper that talks about seniority because the minute that we pass what he's saying the way it's said, then it's going to change some people's seniority. And I still am, am very offended that he would come and tell these things. And I would also, since you're the friends with Mr. Sweeney, Mr. President, I would ask you to call him and ask him, didn't we have this conversation? He used Mr. Sweeney's name at, at ifenitem and that, and when I called David Sweeney because I got his phone number just like you do, he was like, what are you talking about? No, no, we talked, the clerk and I, the things that he is saying is not correct. And so if you take this out of the Rules Committee in the middle of a hearing, you will be setting a dangerous and impossible precedent of something that has no business being done. And he has been counseled by more than one person on this committee about trying, I'm sorry, on this board, about trying to work things out. He wants things his own way. I do have something else. It is not appropriate to bring it now. And so you can't tell him anything. He just wants to do what he wants to do. He doesn't want to hear anything. At one point he tells me, I don't know the rules. But then when I tell him, this is how you do a quorum call, he gleefully does that and does a quorum call. So if you didn't want it to end, we could have continued to have the hearing. He wanted it to end because he was setting this up just the way it is. So if that's what you want to do, this is a dangerous precedent. We don't need to have any rules. I won't be doing any other things. I won't spend all my time trying to make sure the rules are enforced fairly. If you're going to let somebody like the Alderman from the twenty-third come and say stuff that is just not true. And so that is what happened and I don't have, if you want to do that, then you do it.
All right, thank you. Alderman from the twenty-fourth.
Thank you, Mr. President. I, I do agree with the Alderman from the twenty-third. This is important that, that we do, you know, have, have this conversation before the election so we know where things are going to fall. Would the Alderwoman from the first yield for a question?
Alderwoman from the first, will you yield a question to the Alderman from the twenty-fourth?
Yes.
Thank you.
Twenty-fourth, please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Alderwoman. Are you planning on having a rules meeting anytime in the next week?
Wednesday. In fact, it's already set up. And in fact, I have that. And in fact, I have that hearing for his resolution because I had it set up for this morning at nine o'clock. He didn't want it then, so, um, and you can check with the clerk. I already moved it to Wednesday.
Okay, so then there's, yeah, okay, that's, that's, that's all I have.
And in fact, let me just answer that, uh, if, if I may.
Uh, absolutely.
Mr. President.
Uh, yes, if this resp- and responds to the alderman from the twenty-fourth, oh, okay, please proceed.
So, um, when he, I only canceled the meeting. You can look and see, we canceled it this morning when he sent me a, a email saying he didn't want to have it heard. So I called the clerk and the clerk is, I told him, before we start with our new agenda, we, because we didn't ever adjourn, adjourn. So we already set it up to be heard first thing Wednesday.
Totally understood. Thank, thank you. Uh, would, would the alderman from the twenty-third yield for a question?
Alderman from twenty-third will yield the question to the alderman from the twenty-fourth.
Yes, I will. Yes, I will.
Alderman from twenty-fourth, please proceed.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, uh, Alderman, uh, Bakar. Um, is, is there any harm, uh, to waiting until Wednesday, uh, to, to see if this thing can get out of rules? The, you know, the, the old fashioned one?
There is. One is the games. Two, the only way that i- in the meeting, I want you to go back and watch it. Everyone in that meeting was fine with this. She was the only one not fine. And she started to just go on and on and on and on. The only way this will ever come out of her committee is if I make her the head of the Board of Aldermen, which is never gonna happen. She wants contiguous, and not contiguous. She says, I got more seniority than everybody on the planet, and you need to change it to say whoever has the most seniority, which she feels.
Point of order, point of order.
Alderman.
Please ask the alderman to stop, uh, exaggerating and saying what I said. I have never said I have more seniority than anyone on the planet. That is a blatant lie. Tell him to please stop that false characterization.
Uh, Alderman, um, he, Alderman, please proceed. Alderman from twenty-third, please.
Not on the planet, more than any other alderman here, that she was cheated out under.
I, order, point of order.
Uh, Alderman, please state your point of order.
I did not say I had more than any other alderman here. That is also a false characterization.
Alderman, you will have a chance to speak, uh, a little bit later.
Want to be called racist. It's the things he says are racist, and I don't want him to.
Hold on for a second. Only in this meeting, only one person gonna talk at a time. We're not gonna talk over each other. So, uh, Alderman, you will have a, a chance for rebuttal to the things that the alderman from the twenty-third, uh, is, is, is stating. Just like he has a chance for rebuttal to the things that you've, you've stated, right? But right, but right, right now, he has the floor. Um, and, uh, he's, he has not abridged the rules yet, right? Which is the purpose, purpose for a point of order. Uh, but you will have a chance to rebut any other things that he says if you just ask to be recognized, uh, later on in the meeting, uh, under, while we're discussing this item. All right, Alderman from twenty-third, please proceed.
Okay, I will, will retract, and I will give you, this will be my opinion. This is my opinion that the only way that will ever find its way out of that committee is if we amend it, giving her seniority. It's my opinion. If you go back and listen to the tape, everyone in that committee other than her felt that it should go like it is, other than one change. That Alderman Green pointed out that in section ninety, nineteen, I'm sorry, nineteen, it still had the partisan word in it. Any, any, it, it, the way it will work, independents are, is not a party. The only ones that will be able to make the rules, if we don't pass this, the only ones that will be able to make the rules will be the, uh, Democratic Party. Because it says, the, in our rules, it says the prevailing party. Independents are not. And I don't know what she talked to Dave about, but Dave told me, and I did talk to Dave, and Dave told me, you need to make this rule change. To wait to after and then fight the rules or take the majority of us. And I think that's what her plan is, I don't know. But if you listen in the committee hearing, to me, it sounds like, she says, well, there's more of us than them. So we can just always object to the rules. So on the first day of the new session, after the Democrat Party, the ruling party, the only party, makes their rules, then she figures, well, the sixteen of us could say, well, there's more of us than them, so we'll just challenge the rules. So then the Board of Aldermen will just go on at the first of the year with no rules. My opinion. Watch the meeting. It is important that we, as a group, bring this out. And if you watch the meeting, you will see that we could have voted this out easy. Everybody was fine with it. If you look at the hearing, Alderman Green said she was fine with it, except that the one exception which we'll make will fix. Because there was still one, one party partisan part in it. But now we're getting on to the bill. It needs, or I ask everyone to vote to bring it out to the floor tonight.
If, um, I, I, I guess, uh, let, let me rephrase my question. Um, where, so I agree with you on the end, uh, your, your end goal here, that, that this needs to be, uh, that we need to have an idea of what the rules are before we go into caucus. And, uh, I, I agree with you there. Um, but I, I guess what I'm failing to see is the harm. I, I think discharging a bill is a pretty serious, uh, thing. We don't tend to do that very much around here. Um, so I guess I'm trying to grasp the harm of letting the hearing that's currently ongoing finish before we would discharge it, uh, if need be, since we do have additional time to, to, to work.
Well, we, we, we really don't. And I, I'm just gonna continue and just say, I, I, you know, this is what we're gonna vote on, whether to take it out of committee or not. And I strongly believe and strongly encourage everyone to vote to take it out of committee. Let's discuss this with all of us, and let's move this forward so that we can all participate in the caucus where the rules are made. Because.
Sure, no, I, 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 I do understand your concern there. I guess, um, that, that, that's the end of my line of questioning. Uh, I, I will, um, I'll, I'll be a no on discharging this today. If, if next week we come back and we have the same issues where it's, it's still in committee after it's been given a, a fair opportunity to, to be heard, uh, that, then I'll, I'll be with you, uh, on, on discharging it. But for today, I'd, I'd like to let the, uh, the Chairwoman of, of Rules, uh, finish her hearing on the matter. Uh, and with that, I'll yield. Thank you.
Alderman from the twenty-second.
Uh. Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. Um, although I have a lot of disagreements with the Alderman from the first ward, um, I, I agree with her today. I believe if she says she's gonna have a hearing on the resolution next week, she will more than likely have a hearing on the resolution next week. Um, I haven't been watching the rules and the grossness hearing, so I can't say whether the alderman from the first ward is right or the alderman from the twenty-third is right. But I will say that the Alderman from the first one has said on numerous occasions that she has more seniority than everybody. Now, she's right if you add it collectively, but it's not continued, contin- continuous seniority, which that matters. Um, so I, I, I would ask if the alderman from the twenty-third would yield.
Alderman from twenty-third will yield the questions to the alderman from twenty-second.
Yes.
Alderman twenty-second, please proceed.
Alderman, do you think that the Chairwoman of Rules and Grossman would not hear your resolution as she said, uh, next week?
I'm sure she'll hear it, but when it comes out of committee, understand this, the amendment will be that it will make it that she has the most seniority, which will jump her over you. If Lewis becomes mayor, she'll be the president of the board. As long as you're fighting with that, that's what we're gonna vote on, because that's the only way that will see the light of day. And that committee, I'm just telling you, a very bad idea. It's here, we're all here. I would ask it to be taken out of committee. And I, you know, I'll leave it at that, let everybody vote if it doesn't.
Well, so, so, so allow me to make this educational moment. So let's suppose that it's amended in accordance with whoever wants their way. It still has to come before the full body to be voted on. It does not become the rule just because it passed out of the Rules Committee. Um, I'm gonna ask, and you to trust the process, and that you would rescind your motion to pull it out of committee and give the Chairwoman a chance to hear your resolution. I'm gonna ask that you do that because I think right now that is the most practical solution. Because I have no reason to think that the Alderman from the first ward is not, the Chairwoman from Rules is not gonna be about her word on this issue. So I would ask that you rescind your motion and that you have it heard in committee.
Uh, you know, I'll be, I'll be fine with that, but I can tell you, when that motion's made, I'm gonna accept it. Let's make her the head of the Board of Aldermen. I'm all for it. I'm gonna vote with her because that's gonna be what comes out of there, and I'm gonna vote yes with that, and we'll get her all her.
Point of order, point of order.
Alderman from the, uh, eleventh, please state your point of order.
Thank you. I, I don't think that we should be debating policy over, about a person. Um, this is about changing the rules, not whether or not we're elevating a colleague. Thank you.
I think he's, I think he's talked, I think the alderman is, Alderman from the twenty-third is in order because he's talking, he's just speculating on what he believes those changes would be to it if it comes out, uh, you know, next week.
Then he should say the alderman with the most seniority would then be the president of the Board of Aldermen. Thank you.
All right.
But, but what do you, depends on what you're calling. Under our present rules, it's continuous service. Under the rule change that would change would not be continuous, it would be, uh, I'm, I'm, I'm just gonna sit back and listen.
Okay, Alderman, I, I think we can speculate on what somebody is going to do until midnight tonight. Um, I, I'm just trying to be, you know, practical in this situation. I understand emotions are high right now. I understand that seniority is a very important issue. It certainly is important to me. Um, it has to be done in a very fair and equitable way, almost as the way we've, you know, done business in the past. I mean, it has to be fair at the end of the day. Um, I'm just asking if you would just rescind it and trust the process and that we, you know, can debate this before us next Friday.
I'll rescind my motion and look for a meeting on Wednesday.
All right, thank you. So the motion, uh, to pull, um, board bill, I mean, Resolution seventy-eight out of committee, uh, the primary motion was rescinded. Alderman from the seventh, you rescind your second?
Uh, yes, Mr. President, I will rescind my second. That's why I had my hand up. Um, you know, the, the Alderman from the first and I have certainly had a number of disagreements, but I found her to be honorable when she says she'll give you a hearing. Generally, she keeps her word. So I mean, I, I, we can have a philosophical debate about seniority next week, but let's let the hearing process continue. Uh, so yes, I withdraw my second. I did not have all the facts on this.
Okay, all right, thank you. Um, Madam Clerk.
Yes.
Please proceed.
Oh, that is the extent of second, no, I'm sorry. Quarks Committee reported to the approval of the mayor's appointment to the Missouri Botanical Gardens Sub District Advisory Board. Ms. Jerry Kramer and Ms. Stacy Edwards.
Alderman from the twenty-fifth, you recognize on the mayor's appointments to the Missouri Botanical Gardens Sub Advisory Board.
Thank you, Mr. President. I, I am, uh, pleased to report from the committee that we were able to meet, uh, directly with Ms. Kramer and Ms. Edwards, and, uh, both were, uh, voted on by the board or by the committee to move forward with the nominations. And I would like to submit to the full board, uh, the nominations of Ms. Kramer and Mrs. Edwards, uh, for nomination to the Missouri Botanical Gardens, uh, Sub District Advisory Board.
Been moved by Alderman from twenty-fifth, second by Alderman from the thirteenth. Any discussion, any discussion? Alderman from the first. Uh, Alderman from the first.
I was unmuting. Uh, Mr. President, members of the board, I want to thank the alderman from the twenty-fifth because he had hearings, as I have always tried to insist we should. We were able to, um, during that hearing, make sure that we had the mayor's office come and tell us what the requirements, uh, to be on that, uh, committee. I'm sorry, to be an appointee of Missouri Botanical Gardens Sub District Advisory Board, one of the people who is, um, nominated as a, a constituent of mine and a longtime friend. But it still is very important that we do our due diligence here at the Board of Aldermen. So, uh, I want to thank the alderman from the twenty-fifth because we did do that. Uh, the mayor's office had to answer some questions. Um, it will be continued, it will be my continuation to say that we should be doing that at all times. Um, except for the little sub-districts that's in people's wards, that we need to know if we're, uh, hitting the big picture. Um, and so I appreciate the alderman from the twenty-fifth ward having a hearing, and also that he's gonna have a hearing, um, for the mayor's nominations, uh, next week.
All right, thank you. Any further discussion, any further discussion? It's been moved by Alderman from the twenty-fifth, seconded by the Alderman from thirteenth, that we accept the mayor's appointments to the Missouri Botanical Gardens Sub District Advisory Board. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, motion carries.
That is the extent of second reading resolutions and committee reports.
Misaligned as unfinished business.
We have none.
Announcements.
Tuesday, February the second, twenty-twenty-one, Quarks will have a meeting at nine AM via webinar. Ways and Means will have a meeting at one PM via webinar. Wednesday, February the third, Rules will have a meeting ten AM via webinar. And Friday, February the fifth, twenty-twenty-one, full board meeting, ten AM via webinar.
Any further announcements, any further announcements? Alderman from the twenty-sixth.
Thank you, Mr. President and members of the board. I would like to just send another shout out to, uh, the Diamond Davis To Death Initiative. I know it went out on committee, but we still have a week left. I don't know if you remember last year when we were collecting full-size personal hygiene items for women in transition survivors of, uh, domestic violence. We are recognizing this month. So we have a week left, you all. There is a collection being, uh, down at City Hall, or if you want me to pick up any, um, donations you want to make, or you can make monetary donations. Um, Greg Daley's office won last year, so I'm just putting that out there. We got a week left, yeah, to see what we can win. And, um, they'll be packaging the love packages next, uh, Saturday in the twenty-first board, uh, at O'Fallon Rec. So if anyone can volunteer to help there as well, but I just want to put out that. And I also have, I cannot go without honoring Ms. Lisa McNichols, our very own Ms. Lisa McNichols. She celebrated thirty-five years with the Board of Aldermen last week.
Wow.
I just have to say it, and thank her and publicly thank her for always taking my calls. And I say it all the time, never making me feel as a freshman any kind of way. So she has a willingness to work and a spirit that has been unmatched. And so thank you, Ms. Lisa McNichols. Congratulations on your thirty-five years. Don't you leave yet.
She got another ten in her.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Uh, Alderman from the first.
Mr. President, members of the board, I'd like to bring everybody's attention to, uh, the announcements that's at the end of our agenda. So when people were worrying about if I was having a rules meeting Wednesday, it's already on the agenda. Uh, it, we have, for those who don't know it, we have a rules meeting at least once a week, every week, with very few exceptions. This week, we had it twice, set up for three times. Um, so, and again, I want to reiterate, I never say I have the most seniority because I do not.
Alderman.
I just want to know, I want to make an announcement. You told me I was gonna be able.
This is, uh, this is, you, you could have, you know, you know, you're stretching that. You know that when I said you can rebuttal us during the discussion of the item. Now we're just, now this is for announcements. So, so if you have an announcement, please proceed, Alderman. Alderman from the first, I think you have to unmute yourself, Alderman.
I do not have the most seniority. I never say that. I always say that. I want. Like people to put misinformation.
About Alderwoman, you, Ald- Alderwoman, you're the rules of, you, you're the Chair of Rules. You know, please don't abridge the rules here.
No, no, no. I'm making my own announcement. Now you want to abridge this. Because.
Please, 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 please. Let's just, uh, let's, that item is not, is not in front of us.
But the people were asking about me having this meeting. It's on here, right here. Why are you talking that off?
You stated that the meeting is on there. Now let's move on. Do you have anything else? Um, but not, we're not going to revisit an item that we passed on.
Pointing out that we don't seem to know that it's already there. So don't question my credibility when it was already there in the first place.
All right, it's on the agenda. Thank you. Alderman from the twenty-second.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. Uh, Mr. President, I don't want to be out of order. And I want to know if this is an appropriate time to take a point of privilege to talk about, um, something that needs to be talked about as a body.
Well, if it, uh, if it's an, if it's an, you can, you, now is the time for announcements. Now isn't, you know, so if you have an announcement, you can make an announcement about, uh, about whatever you want to announce. For any extended discussion.
Okay, so, so let me just say this, and if I'm out of order, somebody can call a point of order. I, I just want to say that, um, working here at the Board of Aldermen have become a very toxic environment. Um, i- it's becoming demeaning. Um, the way we communicate with people is, in my mind, unacceptable. Um, colleagues going on social media, um, with their commentary on, you know, how somebody behaved and basically putting people on blast and having people bullied on social media, that's unacceptable. You know, I've been a victim of that this week. I didn't appreciate it. Uh, I think I govern myself in a way that's responsible. I want to be respectful to all my colleagues. I only ask for respect in return. And some of the Twitter comments that was made about me is totally unacceptable. I don't like working in a hostile working environment, but participating in these Board of Aldermen meetings is becoming unbearable sometimes. I want people to take notice of some things that have been said in the past about certain people, depending on your, your, um, your gender. So there's been accusations about men saying, you know, that men being sexist. If men have been sexist, we need to address that. That's a serious allegation. And we cannot operate in an environment where men on this Board of Aldermen is being sexist. If you are a white woman or a white man and you challenge a black woman, you're almost automatically called a racist. If you are a black woman and you challenge a black woman, you are pretty much called clueless. If you are a black man and you challenge a black woman, you're called sexist or misogynist. Those are serio- serious charges leveled against colleagues. That is unacceptable.
Point of order.
We have to operate better.
Alderwoman from, Alderwoman from the first, please state your point of order.
I don't disagree with what he's saying, but what I do disagree with, if you're going to let him make that statement, but you wouldn't even let me, uh, after you told me I could speak to it. So either he can't make that statement or I can.
No, I was talking about things that, that you were referencing an item that we had already passed on the.
I was referencing that our agenda. Our agenda. So if we're not, okay, then I'm going to ask for a point of personal privilege also.
Alderwoman from the first, uh, thank you. Alderman from the twenty-second, do you have anything final, to, final to wrap this up?
What, what I want to say, Mr. President, I want to ask my colleagues to be very mindful of the things that they say and they levy against each other, especially on social media. Because here's my promise. If you want to go out there in the universe and talk bad about me and try to demean me, it's not going to be met with kindness. And so that becomes counterproductive. I really want to work with my colleagues. We have an obligation to work in the best interest of our, uh, constituents across this whole city. So I just want to bring that to the forefront.
Thank you, Alderman. Uh, Alderman from the twenty-fifth. Alderman from the twenty-fifth. Uh, we can't hear you, Alderman from the twenty.
Thank you, Mr. President. I wish to, I ensure, I know I referenced it earlier in the meeting. I'm not sure if it's on the agenda, but I would like to ensure that everyone is aware that I am calling a Parks Committee hearing for Tuesday at nine AM. It's that easy.
Thank you for the announcement, Alderman from the twenty-fifth. Any further announcements, any further announcements? Alderwoman from the first, if you have, uh, an, an actual announcement, uh, we would like to hear it. But, uh, please don't, uh, uh, abridge the rules at this point. Uh, you know, and you know exactly what I'm talking about. So please proceed, Alderwoman.
Since you know what I'm going to say before I say it. I request you to requ- to retract that. You don't know. Of you than you are me. No, thank you.
I didn't say, I didn't say that.
Exactly did, and I don't appreciate it.
I just said, if you had an announcement, uh, to proceed, that's what I said.
I don't want to proceed. Thank you, because since you know what I'm going to say, I was going to ask if this was the time for point of personal privilege. So you do not know what I'm going to say. Please do not make remarks before I talk. Thank you.
All right, I, I, I so noted. Thank you, Alderwoman. Any further announcements, any further announcements? Alderman from twenty-second, you recognized on the motion to excuse.
Mr. President, members of the board, I move to excuse the Alderwoman from the fourteenth ward due to necessary absence.
Been moved by Alderman from twenty-second, seconded by Alderman from the tenth. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose. So move. Alderwoman from the twenty-second, you recognize on the motion to adjourn.
Mr. President, members of the board, I move to adjourn to next Friday, February the fifth, ten AM via webinar.
But Alderman from twenty-second, seconded by Alderman from tenth, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
Oppose. We stand adjourned. Thank you. You all have a great weekend.